Welcome to the Mound City Council for Tuesday, April 8th at 6 o'clock. Can we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
All right, we got our agenda. Do we have any amendments?
No amendments.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. And now we got the consent agenda. Does someone want to go through those items?
You can do that.
Okay.
Consent agenda items A through E. A, approve payment of claims. B, approve minutes from the March 25th meeting. C, approve resolution approving one-year extension for expansion permit at 4870 Edgewater Drive. D, approve resolution approving public gathering permit for 2025 Mound Farmers Market and More from May 24th through October 11th with reduced fee. And E, approve resolution authorizing transfer of funds.
All right, you have A through E. Does anybody want to talk about any of those?
I do have a question on C. So we're going to give them a one-year extension. How many of those are we able to provide?
You just got to pull it.
Oh, no. Okay, nevermind. Sorry.
You want to pull it and talk about it?
Sure.
Okay. So we're going to pull C?
I have a question.
Does anybody else want to pull anything else? All right, so let's, I'll take a motion to approve A, B, D, and E.
Motion to approve A, B, D, and E.
Okay, got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, those pass.
We should do it, roll call.
Oh, sorry, roll call, please.
It's all right. Councilmember Herrick?
Aye.
Councilmember McEnany?
Aye.
Councilmember Pugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Costellano?
Aye.
Mayor Holt?
Aye. All right, all that passes. All right, C, go ahead.
Just a quick question. I was just wondering, how many of these extensions do we provide? So is it a one-time thing, or do we allow them multiple extensions of a year at a time?
Jesse, or Sarah?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is actually the first one-year extension that we've received for the expansion permit since its inception. The code allows for an extension, and in the event that something transpires, they could either apply for another extension. I don't think the code prevents one from doing that. I think in this case, and I'm not sure if Mr. Barnes is here, it's just a matter of getting plans done, all the levels of information that they need, and also procuring a contractor was the reason for the delay.
Yeah, certainly. I just was curious if-
Yeah, I think this is the first-
-if we allow more than one.
I think this is the first time, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Herrick.
Thank you.
All right, any other? Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve C, which is approve a resolution approving a one-year extension for expansion permit at property 4870 Edgewater Drive on May 28th, 2024. So if you, anybody wants to do a motion?
A motion to approve.
You just say so.
C.
So moved. All right, got a motion to approve. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, those opposed, that is approved. So now we're going to go to number five. We got comments and suggestions from anybody that the item that they're talking about is not on the agenda. If you want to come up? All right, not hearing anybody. So we got number six, Arnold, please. Want to come up? Welcome.
Good evening. Nothing much to report from the last week, or the two weeks ago. Everything seems to be on the even keel. Things haven't really kicked off for summer months. We're kind of in that lull right now, but we're still out and about. Everything was good. Overweights, people have been abiding, from what we've noticed. No complaints through 911 system. Like I said, the guys are out looking for them. They seem to be abiding by them. And then also, if they need something, they are getting extensions, or not extensions, but permission to move stuff in, like well-drilling equipment if it's an emergency-type situation. So those have held pretty good. The speed signs on West Edge have got, I don't know if you guys have got the info on it. I looked at it today. It seems to be doing its job. It looks like it's slowing people down. I think the next step I kind of recommend is getting a traffic safety vehicle out there and actually doing a little inspection of our own and seeing if they're, if the trailer and the sign are slowing people down, or if it's, people are actually abiding by the speed limits there. It's 30 miles an hour. Sometimes they get over 30. It does look fast. So they may be doing 31, 35. It's still, the speed limit's 30. So we should be checking on that, just to see where they're at for a good, solid baseline as to what's going on out there, so.
Was the report sent to us already, or?
The one, I don't know if Josh sent the newest one?
I haven't seen one yet, no.
I can leave you this one?
We can get that, please.
Yep.
Sure.
You can just pass it down.
On one of the signs, I think it's the southbound sign on there, the average speed was, it said it was 19 miles per hour. It's really low.
But you're, but so, I was out of the state for a week. So when I came back, the trailer sign was up by the main intersection, by the stop sign.
Yep.
Was it where we wanted it to be? Or no?
They moved it, but it was, I think the one at the bottom of the hill that they put on the sign?
On the sign?
That's lighting up and catching, I think, people's attention.
Right.
The one at the top of the hill, I think it was, we weren't sure if it was catching people right at the peak of the hill, but we determined it was, right.
So it was there, it was in the right place where we were?
Yeah. It was, we should have caught that, so.
There-
I think it's interesting, just the number of volume of vehicles that are going up and down that road. But yeah, we need to look at these details.
Yeah.
Their ranges, we didn't realize how much range they had. They could catch a pretty good distance of range, so they were catching a lot more than what we thought they were catching, till we went out and checked them, so.
You're not going to, you're not going to get someone going 40 miles an hour headed to a stop sign, is my point.
No.
But it was coming up the hill.
Yeah, so it was, but again, I never saw it there. So it was only there for a week, then?
Yeah, we moved it after we talked. We moved it down the road a little further.
Okay, because I don't think down the road would, I don't know if we need that data.
It was too close to the stop sign, and they did move it back. So, and that was enough to catch, like I was watching it when I got to the top of the hill.
Yeah.
It was triggering it.
Okay.
So that's what we were trying to capture.
What about right before you go down the hill, or at the bottom of the hill? Because I know that, that other thing on the stop, on the turn signal.
It doesn't track, does it? It just warns people that they're going too fast?
The sign on the post?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's catching. It's catching speeds. It's in there, yep. The front one should be the, I believe is the trailer sign.
Okay.
And the other report should be your sign, speed sign that we have up.
Okay.
So do we feel like the trailer part was put in the right place?
I think for what we were trying to capture, it was working.
Because I thought we were going to get them before they go down the hill, or as they get to the bottom of the hill. That's where they're speeding up. No one's speeding up a hill.
Oh, yeah, they are.
They're not going 30, 40 miles up the hill.
No, but they are coming down the hill really fast.
That's my point.
If that little sign thing that flashes on the curb sign is tracking-
Is tracking them.
And how far is that tracking them?
It's right, from where you can see it, from where I saw it, when I came up and looked at it, it was catching my speed.
So wherever it says it's catching the speed, it's like if I come down the hill and it's like, you're doing 20, you're supposed to be doing 15?
Yeah.
It's catching me there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's catching you in the first third of the hill.
Okay, so that's good, okay.
We were actually impressed in how well they were tracking.
Okay.
Some don't do that, and some do, so.
All right, well, can you send it to Jesse and then have him send it all over?
Yep.
I can give this to him. I'm assuming you can scan it and email it. Perfect.
Other than that, that's kind of all we have. There's not much, the school resource officer said there's not much going on either, but they are starting construction at Grand View Middle School on the remodels going on there. So there will be some work going on, but should not interrupt any school activities or classes at this time.
Okay. Does the council have any questions, comments?
Update on public-
Thanks. Good coming on.
Thank you.
Thank you. See ya. All right, number seven, we got rain barrel sales event, Harrison Bay Association.
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm Angela Sastrom. Just have a brief update for our third annual rain barrel sales event. So I'm a Minnesota water steward and did my capstone on rain barrels and was just, I love how to, it's a really easy solution that any homeowner can do. So it's our third year doing it, this year with, again with Minutrista as well. So we have three goals, just a real high level here. So the number one is to reduce stormwater runoff. So stormwater is, is all of the water that would, if we, if we didn't have all of our buildings here, right, all of the water that would soak into the ground and be purified by the roots of trees and whatever, instead runs off roofs or roads and collects sediments, pesticides, pet waste, whatever, and then goes directly into our lakes and streams. One easy way that we can sort of mitigate that stormwater from our roofs is capturing it in a rain barrel and then manually moving it around and watering our plants with it and giving it a chance to really soak in. So the number one way is really to limit the amount of stormwater. The second goal is then to just help educate the community about this just really easy way that landscaping can be a way to help our waters. And then third, just to promote the rain barrel specifically, that it's really cost-effective. So we're talking like the price of going out to dinner. You can have a rain barrel that you use forever, year after year, that's low maintenance, that saves you money on your water bill, that saves the city of Mound and the city of Minutrista, gallons of water, and gives us clean water for gardening. Like I said, this is the third annual rain barrel sale. So we did 72 rain barrels the first year and 144 the second year. This third year, we have another 72 to sell. And at some point, we'll hit a little bit of a tipping point, but I'm hoping that we still have enough demand this year to get another 72 out there. It is kind of a first come, first served between the city of Mound and city of Minutrista. And right now, we have still 45 of those left to sell. They are $100 each, or with a generous contribution from Bolton &amp; Mink and the engineering firm at Minutrista in the two cities, any residents of the cities can get those for $70. They're all sold in advance, and then picked up between 10:00 AM and noon on Saturday morning, the 31st. That coincides with one of our farmers' market days, so it's a time when we, you know, hopefully have a lot of people downtown anyways. And that is right out of the parking garage in Mound. The impact there, so just in these 72 barrels, that's over 100,000 gallons of water that is saved from being stormwater and then also is not pulled on an annual basis from our water supplies. So the next steps, we'll lead the distribution again, and thank you for your support the last two years. We're looking for the same thing again. Thank you very much. Maggie, you've already sent me the sheets that I owe you back here for the public gathering. We'll look again for help in unloading those rain barrels into the parking garage and for one more round of communication here. So I don't know what the next best thing is, if there's another newsletter coming out or something, an email, but one more blast. So far, of the rain barrels that have been purchased, I think like 30 of them are Mound residents, so we're doing great here. And I was at Minutrista last night, and they're ready to pump out the communication, too. So I think we'll, I think we'll be set. Any questions?
So you got, you're anticipating like selling out again, and you're not selling them that day? That's just like pickup only?
Hopefully it's pickup only, yes. That would be our goal.
How can people contact you to get a rain barrel?
Yeah, okay, so I have the link in here, and that would go right to the rain barrel sales and also to the HBA website, which has my number, too.
I'm just thinking if you mention it to the people listening.
Yes, yes.
How they can access it.
Okay, thank you. The best way is to go out to the Harrisonsbay.org website, and that has information about rain barrels and also a contact that would lead directly to me.
Perfect.
So, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, anything else?
No, that's great.
Thanks for doing it again this year.
Yeah, thank you so much for your support. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, number eight, we got a public hearing. Rita's going to come up and discuss it.
All right, good evening, members of the council, members of the public. I'm Rita Trapp, the city's planning consultant. Before you this evening are public hearings, as we've mentioned, for land use and subdivision requests for Fern Lane Townhomes of Mound. I'll provide an introduction to the project and then obviously can answer any questions that you may have before you have your public hearing. The applicant is proposing four-for-sale townhome units. It's two buildings with two units each, and each unit has a two-car garage. The units are oriented internally, so they are perpendicular to the street, and they have a private interior drive that they all share. There is a shared outdoor space, and you can see it at the end where that gazebo is at the end of the driveway, and then there is a deck on each unit. The applicant is proposing, as I said, for-sale units, so there will be a homeowners' association that would be used to manage the driveway areas and the public open space areas, and then each unit would be sold independently. In terms of a location, this property is located on the east side of Fern Lane, south of Church Road. It's behind the Commerce Place Shopping Center, north of the post office. Fern Lane is a dead-end road in that location. The applicant, actually, there are two lots involved, and they're proposing to combine the two lots, and it will be a 0.21 acre site. Both lots are currently vacant. And again, they are owned by the same folks that own the Commerce Place Shopping Mall across the street. And I only bring it up because I will be referencing it a couple of times as we move through the presentation. So the requests this evening are a major subdivision and preliminary plat, and that's to combine the two lots together and create the outlot that is needed for the homeowners' association to manage. A conditional use permit, they are requesting a shoreland plan unit development. This area is in the mixed-use district. As it is in the mixed-use district, any new development within the mixed-use district in the city of Mound requires a conditional use permit for a plan unit development. So there isn't something specific they're asking for that causes this. This is just the starting point that we have in the city, that all projects of this nature would require a conditional use permit. These pla, or, sorry, these lots already have drainage and utility easements, which I'll reference in a moment, so they do need to have vacation of drainage and utility easements as well. As I referenced, the comprehensive plan for this area is mixed-use. The goal of the mixed-use district is to support a combination of commercial, public, residential uses, townhomes, row houses. It's really meant to provide flexibility, so there's options for infill development. The current density goal is 8 to 15 units an acre. I would like to note that this application was actually submitted in late 2022, early 2023, before our last comprehensive plan amendment, which means it was submitted at the time that this area was actually guided for 12 to 30 units an acre. And I only note that because it's proposed at 19 units an acre. So this application has been in process for two years. The application came in and the planning commission did review it in 2023, and after, we switched our rules. So it's kind of in an interesting spot as a result of that. Zoning-wise, this is zone mixed-use downtown, as I had related. It is a shoreland property. It is farther away from the north. It's actually close, within 1,000 feet of the Lost Lake Channel and that area, so that's why it's in the Shoreland Overlay District. And again, a new plan unit development requires a CUP anytime anything happens of that nature in our mixed-use district. So this shows you the plat. As I said, each unit will be individual, that each have their own lot and block, and then the rest of the site will be in an outlot, which will be managed by the homeowners' association. The easements, you can see on the edges that there are easements around the property on here that need to be vacated. They will be vacated, and the entire outlot A becomes a drainage and utility easement, and so that's how those are getting adjusted. That is something that needed specific public hearing notices, and those were fulfilled meeting statute requirements. I did want to note the evolution of the project request. As I've already referenced, this project has been in the works for a while. The project actually was submitted as the courtyard townhomes, and the planning commission did see it under that. It had five units, and that application was withdrawn. It never made it all the way for consideration. It was replaced with the current project, which only has four townhome units. And then between the first planning commission meeting in March, the applicant reworked some of the landscaping plan, added the decks, and then also made some adjustments to provide information about how garbage and deliveries and different elements would be handled in the plat. The second planning commission meeting was held in October of 2023, and the applicant, or the planning commission recommended approval. And then there haven't really been major changes to the application. There have been some adjustments, and there was a narrative included in your packet materials, where the applicant noted the changes that they had made overall for the whole project. And so those are just, I wanted to note that, just because of the time that has elapsed for this project. Walking through the site plan, as I said, there are two buildings, a north building and a south building. The setbacks that are being established, a plan unit development allows a lot of flexibility, and so the applicant is able to establish through the plan unit development, the side yard setbacks and the rear yard setbacks. The front yard setback is supposed to be between 15 and 25 feet, and they are proposing 15 feet. Again, the buildings are oriented internally, which is different than what we normally see in terms of orientation, and the building obviously is way more than 50 feet from the lake, given, I think it's 600 and some feet. So the setbacks that they are proposing on the north side is 10 feet, on the south side is 8.7 feet, and the rear is about 15 feet. I didn't hit it. Architectural requirements, generally, the design fulfills those requirements. The applicant has incorporated some changes. Building, massing, those are elements that are part of the plan unit development, and you may want to spend some more time talking with the applicant about what they've evolved and how the buildings will look. We do have, and you were included in your packet, some of the computer graphics that try to illustrate approximately what it would look like, and these are kind of the first computer-generated graphics that they have. Building height-wise, all buildings are required to meet 35 feet, maximum requirements. We don't have a building form yet, and that's not unusual for these types of projects. Initial information from the applicant would indicate these are about between 33 feet and 34 feet to the midpoint of the roof. But again, the approvals are that they have to stay under that 35 feet, which is our maximum in the community. And regulatory flood protection elevation, they're generally, because of where they are in the community, that's not an issue for these projects. Parking-wise, the applicant is proposing two-car garage for each unit, and then there's two visitor spaces at the entrance of the development. So there's one visitor space here and one on the south side. As you can see, these folks will have to back out into the shared driveway space to leave the project. Parking on Fern is generally possible, but again, we have the seasonal parking restrictions, so overnight parking isn't really a possibility. There has been some conversation of whether there could or should be easement or shared parking agreement with the shopping center, since this applicant also owns that. And that would have to be something established in perpetuity. So that is an option. Technically, they are required to provide two car, or two spaces, and they have done that. But I know we've had conversation and concerns about visitor parking, so I just want to acknowledge that element. Again, turning radiuses were identified by staff as a concern. The applicant has provided these turning diagrams to demonstrate that there is adequate space, and they also have noted in their narrative that they are going to do wider garage doors. Just part of the other concern is, you know, getting garbage in and out, having enough space in the garage. And they did provide illustrations to try and demonstrate that typical vehicles could fit in the garage. One area that has changed through the project is landscaping. The area, the current plan for landscaping is shown here. This plan has more kind of grass area with some trees and some shrubbery, kind of more toning it back a little bit from, I think, as planted as it used to be. Folks had, planning commission had talked about whether or not folks should be able to use the space, and so they have kind of put this landscape plan together and tried to cluster it, so there's a little bit of lawn area that would be available for residents' use. Stormwater, the proposed impervious area is 64%. The maximum allowed in this district is 75% with an approved stormwater management plan, and I'll reference this a little bit later relative to Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. Outdoor space, again, out the rear of the property, there's kind of a shared community space shown with a gazebo. There is a deck provided on the second floor of each unit. The proposed open space on the site is 34%. We don't have the same standards for open space for townhomes as we do for multifamily, because townhomes are felt to be a little bit different in terms of how people relate to the property. Snow removal is going to be managed for the HOA. Again, it was raised as a concern, given the area on the site. Again, there is an opportunity, if that is of a concern, to maybe look at or require some type of arrangement with the shopping center. And again, that would be something that would need to be established by an easement, something in perpetuity, so if anything would happen, that that's something held on to with that development. Given the time between the last time the planning commission saw this and there was a public hearing, in March, we notified a public hearing for the planning commission, and then and again in October, we notified the same folks, because we had six months in between the first meeting and the second meeting. Because of that time, again, to see you, we notified everybody again to make sure there was an opportunity and everybody had, knew about the project and had an opportunity to speak. So you may have folks in the audience that are interested in speaking on this. In addition to the public, we also notified at each step of the process, our typical list of staff consultant agencies, to make sure that we covered our bases, and staff turnover means that not everybody would have seen it. So in this last round of notifications, we did hear back from four different agencies. Two of them, as noted in your packet, didn't have any comments. It wasn't something of concern. Two did have concerns. One is the DNR. They noted the fact that this is within the Shoreland Overlay District, and they wanted to make sure we were clear about that. Sarah and I know that almost everything in Mound is a shoreland project, but we didn't make it as clear, and so we did add clarity to that, that it is in a shoreland district. As I noted in the staff report, as is typical with any of our projects in the downtown, some of the requirements are just not possible. 50% open space in the downtown area is not possible. Density requirements are challenging to meet, given a shoreline project. We're also more than 600 feet away, so this isn't interacting with the lake in the same way. But we did want to honor the fact that it is, and so you'll notice that we're very clear in our language with these approvals. The other one notice that came was from Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, and it indicated that there was some additional conversation that the applicant and Minnehaha Creek Watershed District needed to have about stormwater and erosion control. As you all are aware, Minnehaha Creek takes that responsibility for the city, so they are the ones that would approve stormwater and erosion control. And so we made sure to link, again, or encourage the applicant to have more conversations with Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. So again, I wanted to note back, I had mentioned, when we do impervious surface, you are allowed to go up to 75% as long as you have an approved plan. So as long as Minnehaha Creek approves how stormwater is going to be handled on the site, the 64% that is included in this project is acceptable and typical to what we see with our downtown projects. Again, as I said, we mailed notice to all properties. We did also, because this is the vacation of an easement, we also need to notice anybody who's in the plat, which also includes those, so that everybody has notice of all those. No comments have been received by staff on the project, and we didn't have anybody attend either the March meetings or the October meetings. But there could be people today, so when we hold that public hearing. Again, as I kind of referenced, it was reviewed by the planning commission in March of 2023. They tabled the application and asked the applicant to address garbage and snow removal, visitor parking, deliveries, outdoor space for children. Then it was seen again in October 17th. Applicant made changes, and at that time, the planning commission recommended approval. So again, our request for you this evening is to hold the public hearing. It will be considering all three of the requests, major subdivision, preliminary plat, conditional use permit, easement vacation, discuss the requests, and then take one of the actions, either make a motion to approve the resolutions or to deny the resolutions, or table and ask either the staff or the applicant to provide more information. We do have three resolutions of approval provided in your packet, and those are because the planning commission did recommend approval. So the conditions include the conditions recommended by staff, as well as the additional conditions that the planning commission men- conditions that the Planning Commission mentioned at their meeting. With that, I can answer any questions if I didn't cover a particular topic in enough, in enough depth.
Does counsel have any questions for Rita?
You covered all of it.
I don't know. It might not have, there's a lot of details. So happy to answer any questions if there are any.
The, the March in 2023, that's when it was five units?
It was four units. There was actually another project before that called the Courtyard Townhomes when it was five.
And this is always four?
This one has always been four. So they did five and didn't receive great feedback on the five. The fifth one was kind of in the back where that patio is proposed. And because of that conversation, they withdrew and then came back with this project with only has four.
Cool.
You, you might not know this answer, but
Oh, boy.
The townhomes that we did on the island.
The Island Park?
Yeah.
Yes.
With the turning ratio, is that similar?
I can look. I, I believe those are different.
Cause there are, there's some on this side, some on that side, so.
But I don't think they're as narrow or narrow in the same way. But I'd have, I can actually, I mean, depending on how this goes, I can look it up.
All right.
It, it might be a little short of time depending on
That's fine.
the conversation.
Well, the turning radius has always been an issue and I still need reassurance that that can actually happen. I, I just don't know how it can happen without crashing into the grills and things, but maybe everybody has slug bugs, I don't know.
Yes, and they also are backing directly into each other across from each other.
Right.
So there's pros and cons. I mean, you do get to know things when you live someplace, but I think you know that staff has shared concerns about that since the beginning of the project.
But, but it is, does it fit minimum guidelines for?
That's what I was gonna say, yeah.
For what? It's a driveway, it's not a street.
So I'm sure there's like a minimum, you know, it has to be so wide.
No, there's a, it's a driveway, not a street. So it's a different, there aren't standards that we can look back at and say it needs a minimum standard. So we asked for the turning radius and they did provide it. And that's why you have it is to say, does that make sense to you or not?
I have to admit, the Island Park, when I've driven out there and it's very difficult to turn around in when there's no snow.
It's tight, but it, I mean, it does work.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't have a little car, but I don't have a giant car either. I have a.
Yeah. And that's the thing, like I have a big truck, I'm, there's no way I would, you know.
It would be very difficult for you.
But for other people, you know, have a smaller car.
I know, and the applicant provided, you know, they do have demonstrated that there's vehicles that can fit in there. But as you know, staff has shared that concern all the way from the beginning about facing structures on a shared driveway.
And visitor parking, they admit, they meet the minimum city requirement?
Well, the city requirement is, is met by just having two spaces.
Two per, okay.
Yeah.
And then they could park around the corner on any of our city rolls, just not.
It's the overnight part that they wouldn't be able to do, but yes. You could have folks that park in, on fern in the cul-de-sac or if you, if you wanted. It's just that you couldn't do it overnight once seasonal parking restrictions come in.
Yeah.
Yeah. But they do have room for the two vehicles in their own garages.
Okay, and then this whole Minnehaha Creek thing, what's the deal with that?
Uh, that is, they need to work out the details because that's the responsible agency for it. The last correspondent, so we received that comment, we passed it on to the applicant. They spoke with Minnehaha Creek and they feel comfortable that they'll be able to meet the requirements of Minnehaha Creek.
Okay.
That's the best we can say because that's a separate agency who is reviewing this and they usually wait for you to take action before they
Oh, okay.
take their action, so.
So ours would be dependent on them approving?
Yes, that is one of the conditions.
Okay.
Correct.
Cool. All right, any other questions for Rita?
No, I mean, I'm sure there's other projects that are, that are that tight and I'm confident that, you know, they're not going to build something that people are, are going to get there and not, not want to buy, but you just couldn't have a duly pickup, I suppose.
No.
The drawing or rendering here, the trees are, look like they're right between the road and the parking spaces. Is there really room to plant a tree there? I mean, is that what we're intending to see?
There, there is plans to put a tree right on it. And I wanted to go to this because I was trying to think of the sequencing of which diagram was done at which time. But there were plans to put trees there. It'll be right tight against the road, yes.
Yeah, be tight. Cause that, that lot is very wooded, I drove by it, but it's also.
Won't be anymore.
Right. Which is why I'm asking about the trees.
Right.
Well, what?
I mean, they're kind of all thistly weeds.
Yeah, are they?
Between the library and the property beginning, but those will all be gone.
Yeah, the post office, okay.
All right, do we want to hear from the developer or?
Sure.
Do the public comment first or developer first? Okay. If you guys want to come up? Just give us your name and address, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, team of staff. I'm Scott Gates. I'm here on behalf of applicant. Sure as I owns the shopping center and this parcel was part of the original transaction. It has been a bit of a long process. I kind of came in, in the middle of it after the initial five unit development. And we sat down, took a look at the Planning Commission's concerns, kind of went through point by point, addressed those. Ms. McInaney and the Planning Commission did a great job. And if you read the narrative, you can see a point by point how we addressed those. We did our usual excellent job, so I don't think there's a ton of questions. Couple of things I can address are the turning radius. We did have an engineering turning radius done by the civil engineer to prove, and if you really want to drill down, I think it tells you what vehicles they were using for those as well. The garages will hold that image shows a suburban and a smaller SUV. So they will hold that. I think we expanded the garages just a tiny bit, but more importantly, we put 18-foot garage doors. Kind of expensive, but it allows a little bit more room when you're pulling in and out. The villages of Island Park are very similar to this. They're a little bit deceiving. Technically, if you measure from garage door to garage door, they might be a foot, foot and a half different. I don't remember the exact. But they have decks that stick out. So there's a roughly four foot deck, maybe a three foot deck on the fronts with posts. So it's kind of like six of one, half dozen of another. They get along just fine. I live across the street and, you know, everybody kind of figures it out and you're both over your garage at the same time. It's kind of like a four-way stop, so I, I don't think that'll be an issue. I think the second thing that's worth mentioning is, let's go to your tree question in the boulevard. The trees can go where they fit. For example, those two trees are close to the entrance, but Fern Lane where the lower tree is stops right there. Basically, it's a dead end.
Right.
And there's open space behind that, so there's a little room to work with that. The reason those trees were there was, there was some concern about, these are very tall, narrow buildings and it's non-traditional. So we spent a lot of time with the street elevation to try and soften the masses. That's why you see the color variations, kind of like villages of Island Park did. The reality is, it's a shopping center. It's the back of the shopping center behind it and there's no traffic. So if you guys came and said, well, that's too tight, we're worried that tree's going to get too big, we can look at some alternatives there from, from that point of view. And it is commercial to the south. It's backs up to the post office to the south. I think the last thing, and then I'll answer any other questions. Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. The civil engineer who did the plan initially determined that this would not trigger an MCWD permit. It's less than one acre and it's single family. So typically that's an exception. I'll divert for just a second here. We have two components, erosion control and stormwater management. So erosion control is always done. There's actually an erosion control plan shown in, in, in the plan documents. The stormwater management is what we do not have. The reason they didn't include that is each of the four units is on an individual lot and then there's an outlot. Typically, these are considered the small developments, either a, a zero lot line, single family or common wall, single family. So it, it doesn't matter. Regardless, we'll, we'll deal with that. I have spoken with, with MCWD. I actually talked to my engineer, he was out for spring break last week with his kids, but we don't think there should be a problem with, with addressing that in some fashion. MCWD doesn't dictate. Their word is we're not prescriptive. We don't tell you what to do. We work with you to find out what works best for this site. So there's a little bit of challenges because we've got so, so much building with minimal setbacks. Don't have so much building, but we have minimal setbacks with the PUD. But we do have open areas and there's a lot of things like some overland flows. We can do some rain gardens, things like that, but we're pretty sure we can address that. So I think those would be the three things that you guys brought up. And then the, the process was partly market conditions, seeing where the market was going to go, the election, some of that kind of stuff. And partly just getting this right. We did spend a lot of time, as you might notice, on a lot of little details, including even on the interiors of these to value engineer them, try and keep the cost, I don't know if we can say affordable, but less and those kinds of things. So yeah, I would take any other questions that you might have, but.
Does counsel have any other questions?
Well, I, I have a, I have a couple of concerns. Should maybe be addressed. You know, I'm, it's really important to me at least to try and make efforts to preserve, you know, the sightlines and open space feel. And as it did then and it still does now, you know, the, the project kind of falls under the just because you can, doesn't mean you should.
Yep.
I, I guess I realize that these renderings are just that renderings and, and they don't show us the final product result. But I, I guess I'd like you to share with us how you feel that the mass and scale will fit into the round, you know,
Yep.
neighborhood and the surrounding area with the new development.
So my, first thing, when you get a minute to take a look at the blueprints, the construction plans that we did for you, the line drawings of the elevations, those are all correct. They're just not in three dimensions. So you can see with, how close it is to these.
Well, I understand. I want to get your
Yep, I get it, yep.
answer to how you feel that it will fit into the neighborhood at that scale.
So I said one thing, I made one comment on it, that it's surrounded on two sides by commercial. So I, I don't think that's an excuse to just do it like you say. And even on the south elevation, the post office parking lot, we spent a fair amount of time with even that elevation. It's got some box windows and things like that. So we've done the things that you can do, the colors, those kinds of things. Worked to try and soften it to do what we can. The little gazebo, you know, some of those kind of things. You can see what I was saying about the trees here too, how they kind of soften the front of it, but you can also see the box windows that we put in, the double gables. You can see a little bit of that on the front. The original plan had a big gable with a smaller one inside of it. And the original architect, I'm sure thought that was adding detail, but in reality, it was just making more roof mass. So we did two smaller ones, the, the box bays. We have some cantilevers, some of those kinds of things. So we've done, I think, as much as we can within reason, more than I think a lot of times you might see.
Well, you're not really answering my question how
Ask me again.
it will fit into the neighborhood. But you know, my concern is as you're, I mean, these are really tall, they're three-story buildings.
Yep.
And as you pull into Mound and go past Artessa and then the park, you're, those things are going to be towering over, they're, they're going to be the tallest buildings in our sightline coming into Mound. So I guess, you know, it would be kind of like, I don't know, a seven-foot man walking into a little people convention and hoping not to be recognized, you know? It just feels really, really gigantic. And when I asked you how you feel it will fit into the neighborhood, this will be the tallest building on that edge of town. And I just, I, I, I'm concerned that it's too much to fit comfortably into the neighborhood. If it were on any other lot, I think it would be lovely, but it's going to be, that's going to be the first thing you see as you turn going into Mound. So you know, I, I, obviously, I guess it needs to fit into the vision that, with the new developments and everything for Mound. And I don't know. To make, to make Mound proud, so to speak, because that's going to be right in our sightline.
Yep. So I understand what you're saying and it's something that again, we worked to address. We didn't ignore the back of the building because of that exposure. I mean, it'll be softened a little bit by the mass of the post office, post office between it and, it and the road, but it still is going to be taller.
It won't be, the, the post office has nothing to do with it. It's sitting above the hill, so it is going to be sitting three stories above the post office.
And the house next door is a duplex, right? It's two stories high?
I think that, I think it's two stories.
Might have.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I'm just, that's my concern. I, I think it's a lot of building on a very small amount of property. And, and as we were concerned about before, I think you were marketing this towards families. Are you still, and that's why we had you address the green space issue, because that wouldn't work for families. Are you moving now more towards like young married couples or?
I think you market that to anyone that's interested, but you try and accommodate as many, as many opportunities as we did with the, with the landscaping and the lawns. And I think that appeals to anybody, whether you're an empty nester or a family.
Yeah.
But it, it particularly appealed to, I think, provided some appeal to families. Again, this is very, very similar in design to the villages. The villages are very close to two roadways there. They have very high density. They did some of the same, well, I should rephrase this. We're, we're doing some of the same things they did. You don't see it in this, but you do see it in the, the elevations. The top floor is white, it has board and battened vertical siding. The second and first floors have horizontal siding. So things like that helps soften that height mass. The colors help soften the height mass.
Is it going to be the same tri-color?
That's the intent. It'll be a dark base. If you drive by the villages, that's the intent.
But this is a much different sightline than the villages. This is, I'm talking about the, the mass scale of it in that tiny little area, especially when you're coming into Mound. It's going to be the main introduction into downtown Mound. When, cause you can't miss it. You're, you're looking right that way.
Yeah, I would say, so the only thing you're going to see is that rear elevation.
Well, you're going to see the side of the building. You're going to see that whole side of the building. That's, that's perpendicular to the post office. So as you're making the turn, you'll see that.
This side that you see here, facing this way is what you will see from the road. Just a single building. Unlike villages.
A mass wall of building.
What's that?
A mass wall of building. But again, they're not comparable to the village.
It's a very small, comparatively, it's a small mass.
But this is on a hill, they're different setups altogether.
We've done everything that I think we can do with it.
And I think you've done a great job with it.
I'm open to other suggestions, but there's only so much that we can do to, to accommodate that. It's a site that had, I mean, anything we put up there, we put a two-story house there, it's going to be exactly the same issue.
A two-story house would be the same as a three-story?
A two-story house with a walkout basement, I should correct that.
Is this, how tall is this?
This is about 34 feet from memory.
The max?
34.2, something like that. Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
So question, this rendering here, there's little patios in the back, are those tiny little?
They're small patios. We don't have a lot of space
Right.
to work with, but that was one of the considerations or concerns with the Planning Commission. They had even smaller patios when we started.
So yeah, the fence that's up there, is that going to be a fence between the duplex and these or are you putting that in?
So
Cause there's not one currently.
This is the retaining wall that you see here.
Okay.
So the lower gray is the post office.
Oh, that's right, we're on the post, okay, sorry.
And then there'll be about a, that, it's three to four feet. And then there'll be about, that, it's three to four feet, so this drawing has that a little bit taller, the upper retaining wall.
So are you putting fencing in the back, which abuts to a residential property behind it?
So the residential property behind there is lower than this. They already have a five-foot, I think, cedar fence. That rendering, I kind of left a break in it.
Yep.
It's not there, but you can kind of see through it. We might talk with them and see if they like what we're doing here, and maybe we, maybe the fence, which is older, maybe they say, this looks good the way it is, we'll do some landscaping there. So they have a fence, we do have a landscape wall there, and we've tried to do some landscaping on the top of it. Again, same thing, to soften the buildings, that type of a thing. My guess is, I don't think we show a fence on the north lot line next to the rental duplex, but we could put that in. We, I mean, I think that's a...
I think that would be a nice to have, based on what's currently occurring in that property.
You know, I don't, Shazad might feel differently, but I don't have a real concern. It's, they have some toys and some things there.
It's very tight to that property, though.
Well, it's loaded with toys, and, I mean, they've been enjoying that property for a long time.
They've been enjoying your property, exactly.
Yeah.
Yep. So, yeah, I think if a fence is something that, you know, that makes sense and that you guys would be interested in, we can certainly look at that. We can also look at some plantings and some of those kinds of things as well, that might try and address that.
Because that's a very narrow strip behind yours, and then running into their property line.
That is, they have, that's the garage. There really isn't any exposure from their property windows, things like that. Their deck is, in fact, I don't even remember if there's a deck on the back, but the living space would be around a little to the north.
So the patio doors with the little concrete pad are actually in the garage?
They're in the garage. We thought that was something that, I don't know, you know, whether they make sense or not, but it was just another little touch that we thought might, might make some sense. The man cave kind of idea a little bit. Somebody wants to grill, they can be in the garage, they have access to the back. At minimum, we would probably put a service door there, so we could go either way with those.
What is the footprint of that patio?
Pardon me?
What's the dimensions of the patio?
The little patio on the ground level?
The gazebo?
The gazebo?
Not the gazebo, the one attached to you.
Just the little ones off the back in the garage. They're just enough to step down onto, they're probably a three-foot by six-foot, something like that. I suppose we could do a little deck there.
Well, you know, there's always the thing about, you know, functionality of a balcony.
Yep.
That's not very functional.
Those are at the ground level, or, you know, one step kind of a thing. So it's probably more, you might do a patio with just a step. So you'd be on the ground, would be how I would envision that. Again, they're not designed to be any big outdoor area, it's just to have some small space. They wanted to have a grill on the ground floor off the garage instead of on the deck above, that kind of thing. We tried to increase the deck sizes enough so we could get a grill on those, a couple of chairs, some of those kinds of things. Yeah, it's, it's a site that doesn't have a ton of space on the, on the ground level, which is characteristic of pretty much any project like this. So we worked to, you can kind of see how we wrap them around the corner, you know, that kind of thing. We indented the doors on those corners just to create another 12, 18 inches of space on the deck. Little things like that.
So one, the two end units have a corner deck, and then the other ones have just a small?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
I appreciate that you've addressed all of our issues. You know, and for me, I'm just uncomfortable with the height of it and with the, with the, I mean, it's literally going to stand over all of that neighborhood, and there, it's going to look like two little buildings on stilts in the neighborhood. And that's my concern. If it were on any other lot, I'd say it's beautiful, I think anybody who would purchase them would be lucky. I think you've done a very nice job. I just feel like it's too much on that site, even though I know it's all, you know, by meet city code and zoning and everything, but it's one of those things where, you know, maybe one, maybe both of them at two, two levels, rather than that third level, could be less ominous looking. But I think this is going to be really in your face.
What's the square footage per unit?
I don't have it off the top of my head.
I think it was about...
Twenty-two hundred square feet.
Yes.
This is going to be for sale?
For sale.
Do you know roughly the cost, the sale price?
Low fours would be the target. Who knows with what's going on right now? But that's the intent. I mean, we even value engineered them to try and squeeze out what we could.
I just want it to be befitting of the impression we're trying to move to, to have people be excited about coming into downtown Mound.
I honestly think that this will be a plus. There's a lot of mature trees in that area, so those are going to frame this to the north and to the rear, to the east. Hopefully, we'll have some nice landscaping with it, it'll help. And again, you're quite a ways from Shoreline.
Now, when it's that tall, you're going to, that's what you're going to see.
Well, but it's, we're not 15 feet like the villages might be from the road. So we're quite a ways, and it's a single building. I think that's what it comes down to. The other thing is, you know, consider that this is a mixed-use downtown zoning. And one of the things a project like this does is helps provide a little bit of a buffer to the commercial, that it provides a softening, a transition, so those existing residents that are right there have a nicer residential project rather than looking at the back of the shopping center. You know, we could probably do a rendering of the rear that kind of showed it from that view, if that would help at some point, but I, I think these, I've been doing this a long time, and we spent a lot of time with this. I was pretty happy with the end result with the parameters that we have to work with.
I did a good job.
What are you going to do for snow removal?
What's that?
Snow?
Snow can be removed from the site without a problem. The only thing that you would get into is whether you have to truck it off the site on a large snow event. We can certainly do that, any other property would do that, being that Shazad also owns the shopping center. You know, there's no reason that we probably can't figure out a way to temporarily store snow on the shopping center site, which is immediately adjacent, it's literally across Fern Lane.
So just like Sarah said, would you have to do a contract then with him?
Well, he owns both of them at this point.
He does.
We would want to, with the association, have an agreement, if that's what we were going to do.
Or maybe just sign easement or something.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, probably just be a, yeah, easement or a, just a license.
All right. So if we could put that in?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions at all? All right, we're going to do a public comment.
Sounds good.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to open the public comment section, if anybody wants to come up and talk about this, I'll give you three minutes. All right, not hearing any, so I'm going to close the public comment, bring it back to council. Does council want to chat about what we think?
Well, I mean, I'm uncomfortable with the scale and mass of it in that area. I like what, what you've worked with, I don't know where you went. Oh, there you are. I appreciate what you've done with it, but that doesn't take away the fact that it's just a mass, it's just a structure in a very small area.
I agree with what Kathy's saying, it is a large mass in a very small space. I did drive over there and take a look at the actual property. I'm assuming it's not financially feasible to boo a duplex there in today's environment. It's a tough one. I agree with you, though.
It would be a lot more expensive, something that doesn't really fit.
Or two-family, or two-small family homes, anything that's not just three-story.
All right, this is between us now, so let's not talk...
Okay. Anyway, that's all I've got.
So anyway, yeah.
So that's your comments?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Good.
I mean, it fits. You know, I don't have any objections, really. I mean, it is, it makes it look taller when we're looking at it now, because we can't see anything that's around it. I'm interested that no one came to speak against it, you know, like a neighboring. So, I mean, I have to assume that the neighbors have heard it, seen it, and thought about it. And when you put it on the lot, I would imagine it blends in a lot better with the trees that are going to be there. It's tight, but I mean, that's kind of what we have left in Mound.
I think, is that the last, Sarah, property that can be kind of developed in the mixed area down there?
I think this is the term, isn't this the last, isn't this what I call the east edge of downtown of the district?
Yes. So that's the last of it?
Well, technically, well, this is the last vacant. Yes.
Okay.
Because if we go back to this map, which will be a second, I promise it's there. There it is. The mixed-use district includes all the way up to church and all the way up to the street with the post office. This is the last vacant piece, but...
Okay.
Other things could happen, maybe. I can't make any promises.
And so everything within the orange area can be 35 feet?
Everything in the whole city can be 35 feet. The maximum height in all of our districts is 35 feet. We don't have any districts that are different than that. That was one of the changes that were made when we updated the mixed use.
Yeah, I remember that. I now know, three years later, that 35 feet doesn't really mean 35 feet, it can be taller than 35 feet. So I wish I would have understood that two years ago, I would have said, no, 20 feet max.
Well, 35 feet is the maximum to leave at point. And that's in our residential districts and all of those.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other last comments?
So I, you know, I think it's a great project, I like it a lot. I mean, for this property, you can only do so much. Remember, we have the flats coming in. If you looked, if you drive by those, those are definitely tall. And again, it takes you a while to kind of get used to new things, right?
Unfortunately, or fortunately.
Remember, Artessa, I mean, Artessa was huge, right? Every time you drove by, you're like, oh my God, that's huge. Now it's kind of like, it's just there, and it's part of the background of what we look at now. So yes, it's big, you know, I'm looking at Google Maps, and I'm trying to figure it out. I mean, until it's there, obviously, we won't know. And yes, you're right, it's on a hill. You got the post office, as you're coming into Mound, you got the post office kind of in front of it, you're going to see it peeking out the top.
No, you're going to see the entire three stories. It's above the, it's on a hill above the entire post office.
Yeah.
So you're going to see all three stories as you drive into Mound.
Yeah. And again, I mean, it, I guess I'm comfortable with that, so. So any other last comments on this, or? Are we prepared to vote on it? If someone wants to do a motion, we got page 879.
There's three, right?
Yeah.
I thought it was in here.
879.
It seemed like it was at the...
Or you can just read the thing, whoever wants to do it.
You got it?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so we have three resolutions, correct?
Yep.
I would make a motion to approve a resolution approving the vacation of drainage and utility easements on property proposed to be platted as Fern Lane Townhomes of Mound, planning case 2303.
Okay, got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Those oppose?
Nay.
Nay.
So we got three to two, right? Okay, so that passes. Then we got 882. Someone wants to make a motion for that?
Yeah, I'm just kind of famous for finding the wrong page. Let's see.
Do you want mine?
Yeah, because I'm not finding the...
What do you need?
Okay, resolution number 25, resolution approving the major subdivision preliminary plat of the Fern Lane Townhomes of Mound, planning case number 23-03.
All right, so that's your motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, that passed, two, and then we got 886.
All right, I found it. I would like to make a motion approving resolution for a conditional use permit for a shoreline plan unit development in the mixed-use downtown district for Fern Lane Townhomes of Mound, planning case 2303.
All right, got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so that passes as well. That's it, right? All three? It's three. Okay. All right, thanks, guys. Number nine, we got council introduction, review slash discussion with Paula Larson, owner of 2316 Commerce Boulevard, thanks, regarding interest in purchase, purchasing Outlet B, Mount Harbor.
The next, the next page has the location. That's all I see, there's a map connected in there. All right, good evening again. As established by your policy regarding development application review procedures, you are receiving this evening a council introduction. The intention is to talk about what the project is that the applicant is interested in, in advance of them submitting full applications. I have on the screen the location of where this project is on Commerce Boulevard between Old Shoreline and Auditor's Road. The yellow is the 2316 Commerce Boulevard building, the red is Outlet B, which is owned by the city. And I reference both of those because that is two properties that are being proposed. The applicant will actually come and propose, or provide the information. Staff does not review this because we are at the nature of it's just a proposal, there's nothing for us specifically to review. We just wanted to open it. As is our customary policy, we did notice neighbors that are within 350 feet of the application this evening, so they would have a chance to come and listen, provide feedback to you, it's at your pleasure of those comments, but it is an opportunity for you to provide feedback and direction to that property owner. Ms. Larson is, I believe, here? Is there many people? There you are. Behind, I couldn't see you. Sarah said you were here, though. She will be able to introduce her project, and will do a much better job than I will. So I will sit down unless there are any questions about our process or procedures, but I think we've done this before, so should be fairly straightforward.
We're good, thanks, appreciate it. Paula, if you want to come up? All right, can you give us your name and address?
My name is Paula Larson. I live at 5713 Linwood Boulevard in Mound. Good evening, council mayor, city staff. I, how do I turn that light down? You'd think I would know how to do that, but...
Here, is it right here? The little slidey thing slides down. On the side of it.
Turn it, I, I...
No, it's...
There's like a slot, yeah, on the side of it, it's kind of hard to find. I have all those at home, and I hate it.
Perfect. Okay, just to reiterate what Rita was saying, Outlet B, Mount Harbor, is the L-shaped, irregular L-shaped lot that's owned by the city. It's been owned by the city 24 years with no revenue coming to the city and Mound taxpayers. My property that I've owned for almost 30 years is the one outlined in yellow. I have a commercial building there, I have two great, long-time Mound tenants that are there, and everybody's happy. The cosmetic work that was in the packet for my building there, 2316, really doesn't need any permission, it's paint, new replacement of lights, and so forth. But it does flow through to the rest of the property. I have three currently, three intentions for the use of this property, and for all you waiting out there, I'm going to be fast for a change. First one is a lot Commerce... First one is along Commerce Boulevard there, as you can see, going north and south. I really want to put in some serious landscaping. We do have some new setback rules here, and we don't want to, I'm not putting a building there yet, but along that north-south line there, our plans include ornamental crabapple trees. If you've ever been by Lafayette Club in the springtime, you know what that looks like. I would love to run that north and south of that corridor along with more perennial and annual gardens. Fence detail in there that's for art. And I just think mound needs some softness to it. The trees that were in that general area, probably those hundred-year-old trees, and I'm gonna guess were put in by Dr. Mitchell, they were all removed, and now we have no trees. I have two trees still on my property here. It's time we add back the landscaping, make it look pretty for our town. There's also a walkway, there's also some benches on the corner, and I would be talking to council member Pew about the age-sensitive benches there, and she's the head of that committee there for the state. Second thing I'd like to do, because I've had requests for this, on the north side of my wall there, I've had requests to put the mural back in our downtown mound. For those of you that aren't familiar to what the two murals were we had in our town, you can jump into the hallway at our city hall. There's a beautiful watercolor framed picture of what that mural looked like that our people here just absolutely love. Unfortunately, that was removed when Walgreens went in. Our second mural was actually across the street from my building. When Tom Flug was over there, he's very musically inclined, very artistic. He had that, the piano keys and kind of an abstract form with musical notes and stuff. It was lovely. And I've had some requests, and I believe it's on the internet right now about people requesting that. Third thing I'd like to do is I like to add the property back to our tax rolls. This has been not earning the citizens amount, the taxpayers amount at one dime, yet we're paying to keep it up. It's time this property was brought back, and I just think the property is, would just be lovely. And I have a lot of detail for this, I've worked hard on it. And those of you that know me know that I do my homework. So there is no voting tonight. My attorney, we may be jumping the gun a little bit, but he has done a final opinion for me. And we also have a preliminary purchase agreement ready to go. And I will take any questions, if you have any.
Does council have any questions for Ms. Larson?
Quick one, Paula. Cosmetically on your building, I meant to look when I drove by tonight, is that roof on it currently? The sloped roof that kind of?
I think you're, it's not a sloped roof.
Well, it looks kind of like a sloped roof on here. This, is that there now?
No, no, I think you're, are you looking at the, what's that called? The awning that's coming down? I think it just looks from the perspective of the architectural, the drawing, it is not going up. It is flat and then
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
It is the angle.
And you could see the architect drew going Long Commerce Boulevard there, we've got some, he added some stuff there to the left. But there's some setbacks in that area, as I recall, so.
I'm excited, I'm excited that you're making some cosmetic
Oh, yeah.
enhancements.
Oh, yeah.
But still keeping, is that mid-century modern?
Yeah, and I'm gonna be keeping the mid-century modern look. I've also started the process to declare that building historic. And it is sixty-five years old, there's some funding there, and I've gotten involved with that group there, so. I'm looking forward to this. This building was originally built by our local dentist, dentist, Dr. Hal Borg, and this was his until it was purchased by my husband and myself. It's gonna be lovely, it'll be just lovely.
Well, I think the landscaping, obviously,
Yeah.
you know, you have a hundred percent expertise there. It looks really, really pretty.
Thank you.
Especially with added benches. You know, I like, obviously, I like that it's gonna appeal to the walkability
Absolutely.
of everybody downtown, it's gonna really fall right in line with the beautiful landscaping that Artessa did.
Yeah.
I'm, you know, it's gonna follow through with that and, and with our new park over at Lost Lake Commons.
It'll just be a nice center of our town, and it's located halfway between our Dakota Trail and our Andrew Sisters Trail. We've got a very successful ice cream shop there, that, that place is hopping in the evening in the summertime. If you've never been there, you'll have to go. And this would also, I would like to take on the responsibility of this spot, but for those that are having ice cream and so forth, or meeting with their friends, walking to town, this would be a great spot. I also plan on some sidewalk on Commerce Boulevard, there would be some downlighting there, so in the evening it'd be safe for everybody.
It would add some really lovely ambiance down to that corner.
Oh, great, the whole area would be, would take it up.
Yeah.
And, and it's, and to bring the trees back, it would be lovely. Any other questions?
Council, have any other questions?
You said that you had like three ideas?
My, my, yeah, I basically had three ideas. Bring back the landscaping, put the ornamental crabapple trees in there, the walkway, the benches. Make it a walkable space for us halfway between the trails. Number two was the mural, and you can go to the city offices and see the previous mural that was up in town. And number three, this has been off the tax rolls for almost twenty-five years. City hasn't gotten a penny one from this building being scraped. And I think it's time we move forward and beautify the space, make it lovely.
And council member Consalino, do you remember that mural? It was on the side of the sports shop, you know, and it looks like somebody locally might have painted it, and you, you could see the owners have true value and jubilee and something. It had a homey look to it.
Local.
Very local.
There's lots more, there's a lot of detail at a conversation tonight with a person, not directly, but indirectly, that is really exciting. And I just think this is just absolutely gonna be lovely in this area.
Yes, it would be beautiful.
Anything else?
Go ahead.
Well, Paula, you know you hit many of my favorite things, art.
I'm old, I can't hear.
You know, you know my love for public art, passive walking spaces. But I guess I do have to ask you, why would you select this lot versus the property, the lot on the other side of your building? And if you're gonna make this into a green space, how is that gonna generate taxes for us?
Because if we're gonna have an owner other than the city of mound, I'm gonna be the owner. It will be fixed up, the taxes will be assessed on there that they aren't now. As far as the other side goes, I will tell you, Sherri, I had a couple of conversations with the previous city manager, Eric, and he was trying to talk me into buying that area over there now. We've had a lot of construction going on with the building, of that building behind mine. And I did mention that when I was up here before in January about my plans to move forward with that. Mr. Eric gave me lots of ideas as to what I should do with that property. And if I can get through this first hoop, that is definitely on my plans to take that too and turn that in. Make that lovely too, put that back on the tax roll, so we can preserve the parking in our downtown mound. That was, half of it was removed by a building project. So I like to put the parking back and have control of it for our businesses, so we don't lose any more businesses. Any other questions?
So, more of a comment, I guess. I mean, so you own, obviously, the building, the blue outline.
Yes.
The city provides parking, parcel A for your building, right? So you're kind of landlocked, right? I mean, you're
Uh-uh, I'm not landlocked.
Or whatever the term is.
No, I'm not landlocked. And there's a little hiccup with that parking there, and you, you weren't here when the little hiccup came, but
So your building is the property. You have a little bit of grass on the east side.
Yes.
You have parking on the backside, but
Yes.
The parcel A, the front parking lot
Yes.
is city provided. The city owns that whole str- so
I'm gonna say the city owns it, but there's a parking issue with me there. I mean, there's guaranteed parking for me because of something that went wrong, and I've, they know about it.
Okay.
So, yeah, the parking is on, yeah, yeah. And that's the other thing, and what Eric Overstein was telling me at the time we talked about it, he was talking about curbing that all-in, so there'd only be one way in, one way out. This is what Eric was, we were talking about before, he's not here anymore. And right now, I would love to see that, because right now, this is a raceway. And we have the ice cream shop up there with people, then he really doesn't have any space, except in the road. And the cars come whipping around on the south side of my building, they go on, is that Marion Lane, north or south? And they run across at high speed right by the people at the ice cream shop, and they jump over and bounce over, and they go over to the bank. So it is dangerous, and I would like to fix that myself.
Yeah.
Well, with the city, and I, I'm not gonna go out there and dig it up.
Parking lot's in pretty tough condition.
The parking lot is in tough condition. City manager and I have already had a conversation about that. Yes, we've had a conversation about who's responsible for that, yes.
So, back when we had at least one o- one other proposal, which you were for, on parcel B with the combination of the, of the building that used to be there, the old dentist office, that, that would actually develop that property, right? Part of why, and I remember talking about this, we were looking at, right where the B was, where he was gonna put a, a sign right there. And that was about it, and then we were gonna do some landscaping and, and that's about it. And I, I don't know if you were for that or not, I can't remember, but I remember the council, was that us?
We offered a tone for a dollar, and he never replied to us.
I was not, I was not in favor of the, of the sign and landscaping.
That's a whole nother thing, yeah, he, he had an issue with ADA requirements in the back. So the council at that point, as I recall, they decided that they would give, what I remember is that they would give, offer him an easement for like a dollar, so he could get to the back. That's what I recall, but apparently that was
I'll state, because I was the one who made that recommendation. I was not in favor of selling off a part of the property for him to get the easement. So we made the suggestion that he could have fifteen feet, what he needed, to create the ADA access issue, and that he could come back with a price for that fifteen feet. Now, while I love open space, I'm also thinking, this is downtown mound, we only have two percent of our tax base from commercial retail. This is a prime piece of real estate property. And as much as I like parks and gardens, we have a huge park that we're developing just east of this site. And is this the best and highest use of a downtown site? Also, if we were to sell this to you, are you willing to have something in perpetuity forever that it remains a park? Are we selling you, you know, you a park and then after a while, your family decides, you know, twenty, thirty years from now that they don't want to maintain the park, that they can sell the property? So, you know, I think it's guaranteeing long-term life of the property.
Funny you bring that up, Sherri, I just spent two hours with my estate planning attorney, and those very things came up. How long can family members continue? And so needless to say, I'm gonna be ruling from the grave with that. But as my attorney says, those things that we would discuss and get down, those would all be presented in the purchase agreement. Anything that would come up, we don't want this, we don't want that. If Paula sells the property, it could go to somebody else. Paula could donate it back. The city could also do all this pretty stuff too. But I, I'm very comfortable with this idea. And being a longtime mound member here, and you know how I feel about this town.
I know how you feel about the town.
I, you know how I feel about the town, and I want to make it for all of us, and make it pretty. And, and I, you know, it's just one of those things.
So back to my comment, when you came out last time and you said, hey, are we open to development? Absolutely.
Are we open to what?
Development.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I said, oh, yeah, absolutely. I didn't expect to have a park bench and some trees.
Okay.
I'll just be honest.
Okay.
I think that was our only option, and that was what we were gonna settle with, I think it'd be fine, and that corner would look a little bit better. But, and I know there's, might be some people here that want to talk about, I've had some phone calls and
Okay, oh, yeah, I have to.
So, when you're done here, I'll let whoever wants to come up and talk, but and I know your neighbor has a, a response in, in our packet. I know he's looking at doing a deal with that as well, so, I mean, we gotta look as a council, what's the best use for that area?
Absolutely.
And
Absolutely.
whether it's your deal or his, or
Yeah.
we hold out for some other thing down the road, I don't know.
Yeah.
But the city owns that property, so I think we gotta make the, the best decision, so.
Absolutely, that's what I'm here for, just to present that. I still have my building, I still have my property, and I'm not going anywhere.
Yeah, good.
So, so the bill, my building will, but you have the prettiness attached to it. And maybe I'll put the landscaping in the back, so. Am I getting a no, a yes? Should I file an application, or do you think I'll be wasting my money?
Personally, I, I don't, I wouldn't do it.
Really?
No, if you, again, when, when you came last time, I was thinking more beautify your current building, maybe add on to the top, or
Which I can do.
Maybe you
Yeah, and that is in the future, that is in the future, I can put a second story on that building.
Yeah.
My architect has drawn, and they weren't in here, 'cause I didn't want to overwhelm the process here. But I actually have, we have plans to extend my building to the north. And we have plans to actually add another whole size of my building onto that building.
So that's what I'm more interested in.
Okay, and I have architectural plans for that, yeah.
If you don't want to do a park and a bench and some trees, I want to see that. I'm not, personally, I'm one out of five, but I'm not interested in just a park bench and creating another thirty-four parks that we do.
And some people like that
Yeah.
brick and the mortar and the stiffness, the hardness, and, and, you know, I have a different take on it. But hey, that's why I'm here, I need to know before I spend three hundred thousand dollars to, to prepare something that gets turned down. Because ultimately, it's not the planning commission, it's not the staff, as we all know, it's the five of you that would make that decision. So if you're suggesting, Mr. Mayor, that I kind of tank my plans, if that's what you're suggesting, 'cause we're not taking a vote tonight.
I, again, I'm one out of five, so you guys can talk too, but
Well, you're not supposed to vote tonight, I guess.
No, I'm just saying, you know, you probably want to get a good consensus before you start spending money.
Give some feedback too, I mean, if you're asking for feedback, like yes or no, I mean, I would just say that I wouldn't, it needs to be like more conclusive than, than this, I feel like I'm not really sure.
Yes, oh, I know that, yeah.
And I'll say we, but I'm not speaking for anybody. This is just, at our previous workshop, like, one of our priorities was economic development. And like, one of these lots in particular, and residents want business, a restaurant, retail, they want stuff there, because we do have a big park right there. So I mean, I wouldn't say scrap it, but like, maybe not this. Something like more concrete, I don't know. Pardon the pun.
We just said the, the rain barrel people here talking about all this stuff.
Not literal concrete.
Yeah. Well, that's what it would be.
But, you know, it was one of our priorities to have more developed, unless our minds have changed.
Is there a ten-foot setback still, Sarah, at that, along Commerce Boulevard? Did we talk about that? Is, is there a ten-foot setback, and it's supposed to be plants and landscaping and all that?
We'll, we'll pull it up in the downtown, because it's
Because it's gonna be difficult, you know, in that little strip of land there.
Well, we had a, a deal that was ready to go, and it just fell through at the end. I guess it was, I don't know if it was a money thing or what. What was that, the three and four townhomes plus the commercial thing in the middle?
They've been two of those. I'll give you a little heads up here.
Yeah.
Since I've owned this property since July of nineteen ninety-six, I have talked to twenty-nine people who say they're developers.
Yeah.
They want the property, it has gone nowhere.
So do you ever think of like joining So do you ever think of like joining up with someone else?
No, I do, I'm a business person, I don't join, I don't go with anybody, I call my own shots.
Okay, well, what if you did something, your, your project, and looked at those other properties? Would you...
I, so, I, you know, I'm so old, Jason, so what?
So you got that property, if, if, let's just say you, you took over parcel A, say we sold that to you.
Yeah.
And then you did some kinda bigger development on that whole corner. I mean, I think I'd be more open to that.
So...
That's a possibility?
Again, a, a, a park bench and some trees and a fence, I mean, again, definitely looks better than the grass that's there.
Oh, for sure.
But I don't, I, I think we, the city should hold out for a better, kind of a real development project for that.
So, what I would say too is, you know, th- this is one thing that has really bothered me, ever since I moved here, is these lots that we have are all chopped up and weird, and, like this one, I mean, it's, it's very difficult to use. Do you think you would have interest in parcel A as well?
Originally, originally, that's what I talked to Eric Overstein about. I had both of them, on both sides.
Yeah. We, we would somehow split that, so you, you would get a portion of that. But again, you know, the, the, that one's probably less valuable.
Which one?
Parcel A, to, to us, to hold on to, per se.
Okay.
Um, just look into the north, and again, I know, because I've talked to other people that want to develop that. Again, you were part of that original plan, or at least you liked the original plan.
Correct.
Um, and I, and it's hard to get that out of my head, and go, okay, we're just gonna put a fence in.
But that didn't go anywhere, Jason, that didn't go anywhere.
And, and, you know, maybe, you know, he just did a deal tonight, maybe...
Like I said, that was the other project, that was project number two. And that fell through too, they didn't have the money, I, I mean, it is what it is. But anyway, I'm trying to beautify downtown mound and make it walkable, pedestrian-friendly, and so forth like that. Um, if my neighbor, if he wants to develop his property, along with anything back there in the back, he should go for it. I'm not responsible for his development.
He did call me, and he saw your video, uh, when you came out last time. And he said he wanted to be here tonight, and he couldn't, because he's out of town. So he did submit a letter, anybody wants to see it, it's in the packet. Um, and I think, uh, uh, he does wanna come out and, and talk to us about that too. So obviously, we'd wanna do that as well, and see what he's looking at, so.
Okay, I'm open to that, if there's another idea.
Yeah.
Um, we have to do what's best for mound, and you five are responsible for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good or bad. But anyway, thank you very much, I think you'd still be really happy with this, I really do. And I think the people on mound would be happy.
Okay.
But the three parts of it, but thank you.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
What?
So you're suggesting I don't even file an application? You think it'd be a waste of my money?
I would not with that current proposal, no. I will vote no for it, but again, I'm one out of five, so.
Okay.
Anybody else wants to say something?
Well, I guess that was kinda like the same thing I was saying, is like, make it more conclusive, you know, before filing an application. So there's more for us to review.
And what I would do, I have plenty of architectural plans, when I file the application, those documents would be included in it. I mean, this was kinda information only, this wasn't a, uh, formal presentation. But I know I have to do that. So anyway, thank you for your time, and I'm going to move forward.
Oh, just, what?
Um, your question, Ms. Larson, uh, minimum setback of ten, max of twenty from Commerce.
So, on Commerce right there, so you're gonna have to go way, move that building way back, which would allow for landscaping anyway? So I'm, I think I might, right there.
So it's ten, max twenty, did you say?
Uh, minimum ten, max of twenty.
Okay, thank you. Second story is an additional eight feet back?
And then there's, we have staggering requirements for it.
Correct.
So like the bank is what, probably twenty feet setback?
You can go above second story though. You can have two stories.
Yes, I can have two stories.
But if you go above, then it's another eight feet back.
Okay, so two stories setback ten feet, correct?
The minimum.
Minimum.
Minimum of ten feet back, because we're trying to encourage that landscaping and stuff, okay?
So, I, I know, I, I got some people that have called me and said that they wanna talk. I don't know if they're here tonight, but, um, do you wanna hear some feedback on your project? I don't know if it's good or bad, I don't know.
Why would I, you know, Jason, here's the deal. Like I said, twenty-nine people I've talked to in the past thirty years, okay, tw- twenty-nine. I, it, I'm not impressed by anybody else talking, I know that doesn't sound nice. But I'm gonna keep my property, I'm not participating in any, if somebody else wants, they're responsible for their property, I'm responsible for mine.
Okay.
So...
So, in the, in the other day, again, I would say, I would come back with something different. Whether that's more development or...
And do I do that on the application? Can I do it on the application?
I mean, you can do whatever you want, but I would, I would probably bring it back to us first, personally.
You're saying come back with more for another applic- for an application?
I mean, really, right now, it looks like you're, you're just kinda fixing the shell, right? You're making the shell look nicer, and then you're putting in some landscaping. And we're gonna send, sell, sell you the property for that. If it's more of a development idea, beyond just a landscaping thing, I, I would come back to us first, personally.
Okay, I will think about that, and I appreciate your time, talking to me about this, and I'll move forward.
All right.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So Jason, just out of curiosity, more comment and question, but this road, it's not designated here, so I don't know what it's called. Did we redo that road?
Marion, yes.
Marion, yes, uh-huh.
So it has been refurbished, or whatever, 'cause it was really bad?
It goes, it goes right into the old auditor's road.
Yeah, new pavement, new curb.
Right?
Yeah.
I'm just concerned about our ice cream parlor being landlocked, and is this road really serving a purpose?
Marion?
Yeah.
Marion's gotta stay, it's staying there, and we have new water mains through there.
Mm-hmm.
Marion, stay, there's, let's not move.
I think that one of our challenges with this whole site is that they're, they're irregular-shaped properties, and none of them work alone.
Right.
Correct.
And so, you know, it's trying to figure out how to get the combination with different owners who have their own needs for their own type of development, but to get the maximum development, and, and, and of community appeal for our town, and that's, that's the hard thing with this whole block, actually.
I agree, Sherri, this is a mess. I mean, it's chopped up, it's hard to use, it's not feasible for anything, at the way it stands today.
No.
All right, again, I wanna be respectful of people that came out. If anybody did come out, I don't know, but if you wanna come up, just, real quick, just give us your opinion, if not, we'll move on to the next subject. So please, just keep it real quick.
Flodeen. Yeah. Mayor, City Council, thank you for allowing, uh, for, for providing the offer of invitation to offer comments.
Oh, sorry, give me your name and address.
Tim Flodeen, twenty-three fifty Harbor Place.
Okay, thanks.
Um, as some of you have already said, this parcel has great potential. It needs a development plan that adds ec- economic, as well as long-term physical improvements to the community. The proposal, I don't think, adds significant economic benefit. And it also has a strong risk of deteriorating the physical appearance of downtown over time, if not properly groomed and maintained. I don't think that adding landscape, perennial gardens, a fence, and the like, seems like a commitment to the future, to, as this councilperson, Kenny, said, to make downtown proud. I think there's a potential risk of it being, looking not that great over time.
Yeah.
The, the last thing that I wanna say, keep my comments brief. The area of this property has recently benefited from a new, more modern look, which is Artesa Mount Harbor, as well as the revitalization of the adjacent city park, the Lost Lake Commons Park, which includes elements of all the improvements that were detailed in her proposal. I encourage the council to continue the momentum of downtown revitalization of those two recent activities in the center of town. And encourage and seek an investment that goes beyond installing landscaping, perennial gardens, and a decorative fence alongside a building that definitely needs a refresh. Thank you.
All right, thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Please give us your name and address.
Timothy Nichols, thirty-seven fifty-two Woodland Cove Parkway in Minatrista. Uh, mayor, council members, and staff, thank you. Um, the civic-mindedness, uh, density within mound of the Artesa Mount Harbor development is well-represented, and they'll speak for themselves. And I think Tim did a nice job with the, the key points that he brought up. I would just be here to articulate, we started a great redevelopment of downtown. With, with many of your help, we, we pulled something off that was phenomenal. That was over eight or ten tries, I know, previous to us, and it happened. And thank you, and these people thank you. The addition of the neighborhood into mound, downtown mound, is, is tremendous. I say step up, don't step down, uh, but more specifically, and I, I, I value Mrs. Larson and her property rights. But I also will tell you that there's things that you, as a council, and you as a city, have to live up to relative to the, the, um, additional development of the property adjacent to us. The, uh, we didn't hook up overhead power lines into Mount Harbor, Artesa Mount Harbor, we buried those at a tremendous cost. We're expecting, as that site gets redeveloped, the city will be in tune to the, put it, placing the above-ground utilities underground. We too will talk about the Marion Drive, Marion Road, whatever it's called. And yes, we were responsible for half of that road with new curb and gutter. The other half is yet to be installed, at again, a cost to the property owners. Whether it's a city, or whether it's the private property owner, that'll be shared, and should be shared reasonably. We have had discussion, I have had discussion with Colin Charleston, and Colin has a nice plan. The question, uh, I, I've been approached by many people as well, and the question to me has been, oh, we can do this big thing, and, and I said, eh, probably not. You know, I think mound needs a little bit of less than more, and do it right. And you, you have the ability, as a city, owning that property, to inspire the right thing to happen. And I would just lean into the good faith and good work that so many of you have put into this city, and to the work that you're doing to better the city, to really focus on that goal. You got one chance to do it right. Uh, yeah, I don't think you have to rush, but I think we need some clarity that, yes, the utilities are gonna be dealt with. The site is gonna be cleaned up, and the right product for that site will be the next step. And, and no offense to the previous applicant, but that's not the right product, and that's not being proposed here, the, the, the townhomes that were approved tonight. It's a good addition to the city, but not an addition for this site. Should we have a four-story building? Absolutely not, we're approved for two, let's go with two. Let's go with some housing, let's go with some mixed use, let's think about landscaping, let's, let's look at this so it's a seamless development, not a herky-jerky one. Respectfully, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, if you want to just give us your name and address?
Yes, Kelly Gillespie Cohen, forty-four hundred Tuxedo Boulevard. Um, I have a quick narrative, I'm gonna try to make it quick, also, I, a little bit of history, I don't think some of the members of the council know in regards to why I do not, um, support the previous applicant. Uh, I feel that it's a critical crossroads here for, especially this site. Um, and it's an opportunity that's been decades in the making. The vision, um, to thoughtfully redevelop our downtown has been long at the forefront of the community planning. It's been a vision grounded in progress, where both new and established businesses can grow, flourish, and invest in the future of the city. Over the years, mound has invested significant energy, taxpayer dollars, into laying the groundwork for this transformation. And that includes the environmental cleanup and revitalization, was now is kinda part of the mound harbor district for, um, and it was intentional, strategic, any, strategic and community-driven. So to see these efforts jeopardized by a park bench and some landscaping, I think would only be short-sighted, and would not, it would do a disservice to the community and to reversal of the progress that has been fought so hard to achieve. And I can speak for some of it from experience, 'cause I was part of a development group that acquired the former lower property initially. Um, we presented a mixed-use proposal, included for sale homes and a commercial corner anchor, um, building that would have been owned by a very respected local business owner. The project concept was praised by city staff unanimously, um, and city council at the time, including the, the applicant. Um, so with the encouraged support, we invested tens of thousands of dollars into the, to move the project forward. Shortly after, we were approached, saying, hey, they have a client would have been interested in selling, we said, okay, we'll have the conversation. Um, however, those negotiations quickly unraveled when the seller insisted on an exorbitant price, zero contingencies, including critical city approvals, and an expedited closing. Why? So then, they could recuse themselves from future votes and maintain the freedom to oppose the very project they initially supported without a conflict of interest. We walked away, we said, we're not going to deal with unethical behavior, and that's, so we walked. And I think as a result of her single-handedly losing that rare development opportunity, we would have brought three things the city was looking for. Diversified housing stock, new class-eight commercial space, and a stronger tax base. I just think the request only squanders the city's strategic value and its disregard decades of planning and community investment. And if they really cared about returning the property to the tax rule that's been lost for twenty years, as stated information, they wouldn't have disengaged so quickly the previous redevelopment, or dismissed the interest from countless other developers. Um, and according to the city's twenty forty comprehensive plan, I would just like to make these two quotes. Investment and redevelopment in downtown, as well as along Commerce and Shoreline, should be a key focus of discussion in the comprehensive plan. And the redevelopment of downtown mound should assist with the development of additional employment opportunities. So I just would hope that that's also focused during these discussions going forward. Um, and that's all I have, unless there's questions.
No, thanks, appreciate it, thanks. Anybody else? Okay. Come on up, just give us your name and address.
Derek Passy, twenty-three fifty Harbor Place. Uh, I live on that Speedway, and Marion, that road is right outside me. Frankly, once people stop going straight through, realize auditor's road, and that didn't go through, I saw Sami backing up there, I saw this, you bet. Uh, but the traffic on Marion Lane is really minor. I really support the businesses in that area, well, except the barber, I haven't been there.
He does a really good job.
He is a good guy, yeah.
All three of my boys work there.
But I had copies made today, I've had keys made there.
Yeah.
Uh, the hardware store, that was really busy when we're moving in, and yeah, we're probably gonna lose a few residents going across to the ice cream store. I support, one, I support having serious landscaping along Commerce Boulevard. Uh, that makes sense, there's no direct access, maximum twenty feet, you can get a lot of trees in twenty feet shrubs. Uh, we saw it on the townhome proposal earlier. Murals on the building, well, let's get the building restored first. Make building, historic building, it's encouraging that she's looking to get the historic designation of the building. Get rid of the grass, grass growths out of the roof. And it is, does have a slope roof, but it's sloping down. So, um, and as far as adding to the tax rules, add the parking for that building to the tax rules. Because it's on, they're using it, uh, for the building, I'm not sure what the historic ramifications are there. But I look at it, and I go, wow, they're parking, and they don't have to pay a cent of taxes on it. But it also means, now I know who I go to for the erosion that came off that parking lot into our pond. So, thank you, uh, and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the direction it seems that you took.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, too.
Anybody else? All right, we're going to go to the next one. So number ten, we got council introduction, review and discuss with Jim Koch of Angel M. Consulting Group regarding the concept plan. We got Rita coming up.
Good evening, again, this is a council introduction, so we are following the same procedure where we are trying to give an opportunity for a developer who is in interest in a particular project to have an opportunity to speak with you, and any members of the public. These properties are at six-six-three-nine-six-six-two-seven and six-six-two-five Bartlett Boulevard. Some of you have been on council for a while and know that we've seen a variety of concepts over the years for this site. One thing that I do want to point out that this one is different is because this one did actually involve some additional property than we have seen in the past. So I did want to flag that, because in the past, we've only seen the narrow property on the westernmost side of the city boundary, and now they have actually entered into agreement with two more properties to the east. So the project is a little bit bigger on the mound side than we've seen in the past. And so they can present the property proposal, I mean, to you this evening.
All right, we got Jim? Can you give us your name and address, please?
Dean DeHolus, DJR Architecture, three-three-three Washington Avenue North, Minneapolis, Minnesota. And thank you for pulling up.
You gotta slide it, yeah?
Just push it down.
Or you turn them off.
The white one.
Just turn them off.
Just push.
Oh, there you go.
More of the evening effect here, then this has a spotlight.
It's a yellow one.
All right, I just blew that, so my apologies. Thank you, I shouldn't have touched that. Anyway, sorry about that. So this is a project that actually incorporates both Minatrista and mound. So it's two adjoining properties, and you have the show that's there. And we've started the process in Minatrista. We're going before the Planning Commission for Plimary Platt on April twenty-eighth. So I just want to make council and the audience aware that I'm here, I welcome to attend. And so we're here under what you call an introduction, but I've pulled in pieces of our Plimary Platt presentation so the city, council members get a picture of the whole project and so forth, of the elements of it. So that's going to be sort of the key part of it. What we're hoping is that hopefully the two approval projects align if we find the project.
Which one do I touch with the?
Yellow.
Yellow. And do, can this advance or not?
No.
I'll let you do it, okay.
Perfect, so, so here is the whole parcel. This piece right here, right through here is mound, and then the remainder here is Minatrista. And the combination of a high level here, this is a three-story, twenty-four-unit condominium building here, three-story, twelve-unit condominium building, three-story, nine-unit condominium building. These are two-story townhouses, as you see right here, eight units in Minatrista, and then one, two, single-family lots, and a community center boathouse that's going to be enjoyed by the whole development. There is single-family houses here, twelve, right here, and then three other single-family houses in this area. So that considers a whole development. The idea of the pond, you can certainly see the ponding work through here, so we're trying to do it in tiers, intercept water here, and then obviously through these residential lots. We are not building, and I'll show you this, we're not going to build on any of the slopes at all. That's what we're going to emphasize, those are trees to try to capture the water in each tray, so to speak. So it really minimizes water that runs towards the lake. So basically, think of these platforms as each capturing water. So we're leaving the existing graded site intact, and we're going to preserve the hill that sits here on the Minatrista side. Obviously, we leave the hills in here intact, eliminate the driveways that come off of one-ten, so that helps eliminate and sort of slows the erosion, because these driveways that ran down are sort of working like gutters that bring the lakes. The idea is that we cut that off and really clean up. So we're offering a variety of housing types from townhouses that kind of mean living to single-family homes. It's sort of the nature of development. Next slide, please. So I'm just showing you this as a civil plan, again, just to show you the idea of what's within mound, and again, what's in Minatrista, next slide. And this shows that we're really working on minimizing impervious service. So you could see that we really, in all these areas, means these are pervious pavers, with the idea of really keeping hardscape at a minimum with the development. And we're going to emphasize natural ground cover as opposed to manicured lands, because they have a higher permeability. So that's because they need to, because the site is pretty much intact in terms of trees and ground cover. So we're going to emphasize, try to keep that intact as much as possible. Again, you see the portion which is eight townhouses here, the two single families and the boathouse that's within the mound area. Next slide. And again, I'm just showing the grading, because they sort of emphasize that this is what we're going to stay out of to, and obviously keep this hill intact and place, and that's why the buildings you see location here, and why the townhouse is built on top of the bluff so that these grades in this area in here are preserved intact. Then that becomes a primory in that the flat areas, you see the various retentions being worked in, become the area to receive the stormwater area to put the major buildings on. Single-family houses have a little more flexibility, but larger buildings want to really keep and sort of the areas that are less forested and flat within the site. Next slide. And again, this is our tree replacement, and some of this is old, so these, some of the, we've lost some of the trees that it sits in. But the idea is that, and the same will occur in mound, we want to emphasize all the trees on the hillside. So we start creating outdoor living rooms within these areas, and start creating zones within the property for screening scale and elements like that. Next slide. And again, this is just sort of architectural ideas of what we're trying to achieve with the buildings. This is example with the condominiums, and you'll see more detailed drawings of the level and type of design we're emphasizing on that. Next slide. This is the townhouses, and this is sort of what we're working with in terms of architecture style. And then you can see the information scale of them on the sheets, next slide. And again, single-family, the architecture trying to achieve within that package, next slide. And again, the dock house gazebo, which is a community building that'll be down by the lake. So everyone has a piece of lake, but through this one building here, next slide. And again, this is starts, describes the plans of the townhouses, and the idea how they work, next slide. And this is the architectural nation of decks, there are two-story elements, garage. So the idea is that there's a series of open area decks that face the lake, garages, and then in and outs patterned so they have a nice scale and rhythm to them. Next slide. And the boathouse, this is the element, again, this is, in mound, it'd be down by the lake, which would be a common community building, you see right here, that the residents could have joined. So the idea is that everyone has a chance to go by the lake and join. So we left that part basically open to the public of the community. And so everyone has a private lot, but they have this common area and the beach right here that they could enjoy. Next slide. And again, these are showing some of the single-family house, starting to develop first house, next slide. And this is starting to get an idea of sort of the architecture, nature of the house, and sort of the scaling that I sort of showed before. A lot of gables, elements in and out, so they scale nicely, next slide. And again, this is quickly just development of the condominium, this is a twenty-four-unit building, next slide. We have a two-per-space indoor parking, next slide. And again, the various unit layouts, every unit having lake views, next slide. And again, the twelve-unit building, you see right here, and again, variety materials of stone, wood, and dark metal siding, sort of to give it a scale and element, but using again, natural materials within the building. Next slide, and again, parking, next slide, and the basic plan, again, all lake views. And again, the idea of all the density is put at the top of the hill so that the lake area, it scales from like on one-ten, three-story, then it's two-story and one-story, single-family housing. So the density is against high travel road, and it tapers from there, next slide. And again, view of the building, the architecture of it, nine-unit building. So again, we broke it into three packages, next please. And again, parking, that's below, so the majority of our parking's below grade, out of sight, out of mind within, which is the only parking that's visible within developments, the guest parking. Next slide, and again, the unit layouts. And that, next, or is that the end?
That's it.
That's it, so I kept it brief and sweet on the process on it. And why don't you go back to the site plan, because that's probably what's going to be referenced. So the idea is that we're really trying to strive for is create a development that's integral, provides a variety of housing, protects the lakeshore, preserves the trees as much as possible, intercepts the water, stormwater, and so forth, and really creates a host of housing variety. And then again, like you say, the far-right side is what's within the mound jurisdiction. So really what we're looking at officially is eight townhomes, two single-family houses, and then the one community building. So I'll stop there, thank you.
Does council have any questions?
Well, I a hundred percent appreciate that you listened to us last time, because we didn't want to be the Minatrista stepchild. You really amped up the mound side, and it looks just beautiful.
Oh, thank you.
The whole, the whole thing looks just great, and I love the addition of the dock house. So will people be able to keep, you know, like, anything there, or is it more of just a gathering place?
It's a gathering place, we may, underneath it, they, if they want to keep their toys. So if I set it up so that below it, I don't know if you guys have been in Naples, Florida, areas in Florida where they store underneath the various dock houses. Same concept here, is the idea is that they can store beneath this. So if they have toys and boogie board, stuff like that, this provides that opportunity. And it'll be screened, so you won't see all the stuff laying around, but it'll be under here. So the answer is yes.
Will residents have to pay a little fee to like reserve a little space down there?
Well, it'll be in association, you know, each of these, you look at association, it'll be part of it. So it'll, depending on how they want to parcel on, work through that.
We did a beautiful job.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for amping up mound.
It is beautiful, I really like the plan. I'm just curious, on the dock house, though, is that the association for the townhomes, or the condominiums in the townhomes? Or all of the whole area?
This whole area has this access.
I'm just thinking about long-term maintenance and care.
Yeah, but it's within the association, so we'll have that.
So it's part of the entire, okay, great.
Exactly.
Even better.
Yeah, just for mound, yeah. Sorry, everyone over here, out of luck.
How much were the, I know the single-family homes were one and one-point-two million, I think. What were the townhomes again?
Townhouses will be in the similar price bracket. And again, it varies, because they, I have sort of two styles. The one's a two-story, and the other's a version of a deck, so there's variety in that, yeah. So there'll be differences depending on what people choose and work with.
Looks awesome.
Sorry, there was a, yeah, sorry.
Could you just talk a little bit about the timing and the staging, how the development's going to work, and also about the utilities for each of the cities?
Yes, so this is sort of important, this is, I hope, could be worked out. We have submitted formally for Plimary Platt in Minatrista. So we had a community meeting at the Gallipsie Center, fifty people attended, it was generally well rece, it was well-received. As I say, normally these, these community meetings get chewed up on, this is not the case. They were very happy with sort of the results and the nature of where it's coming. So we've submitted, and we're on the twenty-eighth, before the Planning Commission of April, in Minatrista. What I was hoping, assuming that council likes the direction, it seems, is to possibly get these schedules aligned, because part of the issue is that we're taking away, you know, the driveway through here, which is sort of pounding back the erosion, using Halsted to service these houses, low area. And obviously, utility line, you know, sort of comes right, basically, like across here. So we'd like to get the city's schedules combined, so that construction, utility work can all happen simultaneously as piecemeal on this project, so that'd be good. Because we'd like to treat this as a whole project, obviously, combine and coordinate, you know, stormwater, utilities, and all those, as opposed to try to do a little piece here and a little piece there. So getting coordination scheduled would actually be quite helpful on getting this tied together, is one, unify development, even though it, you know, overlays into two municipalities. Does that help answer your question?
With utilities, who's?
Yeah, utilities, where are the utilities coming from for the Trista side and for the Hellside?
Right now, there's a main line that comes right through here, and we have to work with both cities to coordinate the utility systems of where they're coming from and the support. The one thing sort of common in the community meeting is like, you know, it said, well, our water's awful. Well, I said, what about mound water? Well, that's awful too. Great, so we're going to have to work with city staff and engineering to really help coordinate and start pulling those pieces together on it, as we work through it.
For the, for the dock house, I see the little, one little line there of a dock, per se, but then I see some other stuff there around it, is there actual docks, or is that just?
No, there'll be, there'll be a couple docks, I mean, how many are we allowed, basically?
It's a hundred-foot dock for four slips.
Four slips.
Okay, so.
But there's a boat club that we're working with where residents can order a pond tool and get a runabout for the day, and it's part of the regular boat club.
So four docks.
Four docks, and that's what's approved for that size of lot, because that's, I mean, if you don't have that, you don't have, I mean, that's the mound side.
Yeah, correct.
That's a big deal for your development.
Exactly.
But no one can park overnight?
No.
Technically, no one's going to own a boat in this way.
Technically, guest lot, but that, not overnight parking, correct? Because as Jim mentioned, D-docs is pretty the key word for this.
Yeah, and you said the townhomes, you're looking at around a million?
Yeah.
A piece, okay.
So, but they, they all have lake views, and I set them in the decks, you know, being on top of the bluff there. It's actually a nice setting, and then, like you say, we left all this open where the steep slope is, and then we didn't do any more until we got to the base of the hill. So we try to stay on top, in the flat areas, and leaving the hillsides intact. Even though these were not original, you know, this was carved out when this was a trailer park, we're leaving that. The other thing we're doing is try to limit this to two curb cuts off one-ten, obviously, Halsted here and one here, because historically, there was four or five in here, to try to ease the traffic issues that there's only two points, which will make it a little bit safer on the county road as part of the development.
So the two single homes will access that road and then down Halsted?
Yeah. So the townhouse is here, and then the remainder of the development here, which is already the existing Halsted Avenue, so.
Is that a private road or a city road?
This is a city road.
Yeah, that is, but over here.
This is a private road.
That'll be private, okay.
Yeah.
Do you have lots of ample parking on the Minatrista side for the townhouses?
Yes.
I, I don't see any, you know, guest parking for the, for the mound side, but is that road going to be wide enough for?
Yeah, I mean, once I get into detail, I'll make sure there's, you know, two spaces per unit plus additional guest parking is part of it. Yeah, so absolutely, because we want to make sure cars stay within their realms here and here, so that it all essentially self-contained.
Thank you.
Is there going to be a way to get from like the townhomes on the top down to the dock?
Yes, what's not shown here, there's going to be a set of stairs that connect down to here, and what I call pervious trails that tie across this, yeah. So pedestrian-wise, people can walk down from here. Obviously, the car, they got to hook around like this, but pedestrian-wise, it will be connected.
I was going to say, golf cart maybe?
The golf cart here would be a little tricky. A little too steep. I'd have, I'd have a zigzag ramp going back and forth if I tried to make that work, unfortunately.
And then I did see that you guys are already like clearing out the woods over there?
They were actually clearing, just, there was some work on the dead trees, but no, nothing's being taken out. There was some diseased trees that was taken down as part of that.
I drove by the other day, I was like, wow.
Yeah, so it's, because we need to do a tree survey, tree company, we want to actually count living trees.
Living ones, yeah, cool. Sarah?
Just a couple things, as, as we talked about in our memo, we have not done land use analysis of this, because like... because that comes afterwards. But for those that may have been around a couple of years ago, the Serenity Project, we had several levels of approvals, including we did a rezoning and we did a comp plan amendment. And that, that project at that time had 10 units in one building on the mound side.
Yep.
It's important that everybody understand that in addition to the, to the subdivision, we'll have to determine if in fact the comp plan is adequate or if in fact we may need to amend it because we have added the 6625 and the 6627 into this parcel. And, and that was not part of any land use approval last time. This property is owned, our three, I think. And it's owned, our three, in medium-density residential. And it had 10, it had 10 units within one box at the time.
And we have 10, eight and two. Eight townhouses, two single-family. And a boat house.
But the, the properties have gotten bigger.
Correct.
I mean, those are things that we have to kind of work through. You know, obviously, we want to facilitate a schedule as well, but we have, we'll have to figure out what we anticipate we need. You know, was it a rezoning? Is it an amendment to the comp plan? Is it a plat? We know it's also a shoreline P and B.
Yep. And we are, you know, with this, we've achieved a 25% previous cover. So we're working within the shoreline, so that.
On, on the mound side?
On both sides.
Oh.
Correct.
So Sarah, if I'm hearing you right, you're saying we need a four-fifths vote?
I think the biggest part that we wanted to get across was the timing aspect of, if a comp plan amendment is needed, it will take more time than a traditional approval.
But if we redo our comp plan, we got to have a four-fifths vote, right?
Four fifths is if you, I think it's if you change. Well, I don't know. I didn't think you did for our comp.
Because this isn't going to fit our comp plan then?
What?
This is over our comp plan?
We don't know yet because when we did this project in 16, it was only the 6639 parcel. It was not involving the, the adjacent neighbor parcel, no?
Yes.
And so.
So the good news is because we've added, it's actually hopefully less dense.
But we have a minimum density you have to meet. So the question is, with the same number of units and a bigger parcel size, you've just dropped.
Oh, that do we fall below your comp plan requirements?
One is medium and one is low. The other ones are probably in low-density residential and the other are medium. And now we've, so we've kind of made it a, a thing that we will need to address.
They could always pack in more units.
And that's just with looking tonight because we have not spent any time.
But that's important because if we do have to change it, we do more.
It's another cycle.
Well, that, but then plus, a lot of us got to agree, right?
I think a comp plan amendment is a majority vote.
I think so too, but whoa.
It's not supermajority? When we updated ours, we needed a four-fifths.
I mean, the supermajority is a rezoning. If you do a rezoning.
Remember that?
To a residential.
It was four fifths.
That's a four fif-, like, there are some things that are four fifths, but I don't believe in that.
So this, this, you don't think this part will be a four fifths?
But it would be, it would be a planning commission public hearing and it's going to have some sort of distribution for agencies. It might be an administrative, it might be a 60-day, all of which we would need to wrap into the timing. Those are things that we, that get figured out with the applications.
I think because it's on the border of Minatrista, it's unlikely to be something that you can just do in-house without a lot of distribution to other communities because there is rules that say, if you're so far away from another community. So the only reason we brought it up is there are things that will need to be investigated. It hasn't been done yet because we're not that, at that part of the process. But we want people to be aware that that may be something that we'll have to deal with if that is the case.
And we try to run those as, as much as we can concurrently.
Thank you.
But some, like, for example, in the event that we need to amend the comp plan, that has to be a conditional approval until that gets approved by the council before the, our council could do a final decision. And I think that's probably similar to what we did during the Serenity process in 16. It's just, it, it's a little bit bigger now, so there's other technical things that just have to be figured out.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you. Because we're ready to get to work with you guys and start, start this through. So thank you, assuming the councils have to, what they're seeing.
Here's the quickest research I've ever done in my life. And we'll, and so don't take it to the bank, but I'm looking at the League of Minnesota Cities material on comprehensive plan and it's citing Minnesota Statute 462.355. And it says, unless otherwise provided in the city charter, which we don't have, the city council may, by resolution and by two-thirds vote of all its members, adopt and amend the comp plan or a portion of this plan that means that on a five-member council, the comprehensive plan must receive at least four affirmative votes.
Remember, we just did this last year.
Very good.
See, I know something.
They'll charge you a quarter hour for that.
My point with that is if that's correct, is that, you know, we all got to kind of be on board with the concept. And then, of course, obviously, you got to go through planning, but, you know, you kind of need four of us, so.
Well, residents around there would need to be notified.
Yeah.
What type of timeline are you, I mean, I'm concerned about us being in a timeline with Minatrista because obviously this is a big issue for the developer to do all the things he needs to do. And if we're looking at a tight timeline, how quick can we turn that around?
When are you looking at building if?
Obviously, you know, if Minatrista, we'd start construction come the summer. So with it, because we've had good interest in the project and Minatrista was very supportive of it. From the public meeting we did and general direction of it. So we, it sounds like from the few council, you know, council leaders sound positive too about this development. So honestly, I'd like to get this going and like still work with staff. And if there's meetings, special planning commission meetings, we'll accommodate your schedule and make this work.
And did you say April 28th, you're going to Minatrista planning?
For Planning Commission, Minatrista, for preliminary plat.
Okay. Okay.
So it's not summer?
The comp plan amendment seems to be a, it's an important thing for us to figure out.
All right.
If we need to add a unit, sneak one in.
We did have some preliminary conversations with the cook about timing. You know, if, if applications come in, you know, the first thing is we have to get the material and we have to have signatures and we have to have complete information so that we can send it out for determination of completeness. So that we have an application, complete information. So once we get all the comments back that we can notice for the public hearing. And to try and keep them on schedule, one, one thing that we talked about is, say, for example, it comes in tomorrow. The earliest we could get them done for completeness would be probably that last week of April. And then we have to publish.
Right.
Public hearing notice, 10 days and we have to mail. We would not be able to hit the first meeting in May. But the planning commission does have the opportunity, if they're willing and we can accommodate schedule, they would do a special meeting upon request. And sometimes those are normally held at their third, their third Tuesday. Of course, that's, that's assuming that we get the applications in and we get things deemed to be completed. We all figure out what we need to do.
No, and we have, you know, we could submit stuff very rapid as we, obviously, had the full application before Minatrista. So, but you could probably turn it over to you, you know, a few things were, to help at least expedite the project.
Right, long as we have, we need complete information. We need full grading, engineering.
Yep, we have, yes.
Water and source, stormwater, architectural, that. All of that has to be, just a standard application.
Yep, that we do have. For the Minatrista, we've completed that. Obviously, we did the same for the other. So the only thing that's, I'm still completing this tree survey, you know, few elements like that. But the majority of all that you've listed, we have done on that. So we'll work with you to get the information, then you can review it and make sure it's complete to help with the process. Thank you.
All right, does council have any other questions?
No.
Awesome. Okay.
Well, thank, thank you for.
Yeah, I appreciate it. It looks great, even the better than the last one, so.
Good. Well, thank you for your voice of support. Appreciate it very much.
We'll see what you do through planning. And then I'm going to open it up. I don't know if anybody here wants to say anything quick, but. Yeah, come on up.
Very briefly.
Yeah, give us your name and.
6627, 6625.
The neighbor.
Bartlet Buller.
Yeah.
The neighbor.
Yeah.
My wife as well, Kami. I, I would raise a point about the density issue. So that the area with the blue condominiums is very isolated. It's from the rest of the development. And it's actually probably a mistake to make that higher density at the time because it's so disconnected with everything else. And I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. It's just that's how land use works at the time. But it is, it, it's extremely difficult to make it that density because it's not connected with sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera. So hopefully, there could be a balance, and I don't know if you can do this, between the communities and density because Minatrista's a little denser. And I don't know if you can share density like that, but probably not. So there you go. But Kami and I planned to, we were up here before and I remember the comments and it was 10 units on just part of that and it was stacked in there and it was Mount Hucky. That was the comment. And at the time, I said, "We're going to stay here long-term." And Kami and I still are. We're going to, we're going to be building in the gray house there on that property. So we plan on staying there. We've been there seven years. We bought it when, when Serenity or whatever it was called, that was going to tower above our house. So we knew that. This is, there's been a couple other iterations since then. This by far is the premier development. So I'm, I'm glad that you all have seen it the way I see it and we're excited about it. This also gives us an opportunity. We bought part of our lake shore, 50 feet of it from the county. It was a tax forfeiture parcel about three years ago, four years ago, that had a conservation. He's been on it for 20 years. So we brought that back into the tax roll. We're going to continue to do better on that. The lake shore is in extremely bad shape, so this gives us an opportunity to fix the lake shore. Mr. DeVallis talked about the trench, the driveway. I have to repair that driveway a couple times annually. It, it erodes about one foot to two feet. And where all that material goes, it goes in the lake. So it's an extreme erosion issue. So this gives us an opportunity to work with the developer, not only on that issue, to divert some stormwater west, but also to, when we combine the developments to really fix some issues between the common property lines with old retaining walls that actually right now supports, I got two houses on the property, supports part of the house. So we're going to demolish the smaller house down by the lake. That will be gone. And that's about, I don't know, it's probably 20 feet off, 25 feet off the lake. So we're going to be moving our house back to, to, you know, environmental stewards on every regard. So appreciate the development and I'll make it short and keep it at that. We're going to be living beside the boat house, so we understand the nuances with that as well. We won't be, we're not, we won't be part of the homeowners association either. So just as an FYI. So we're excited about it, so thank you.
All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Can you come up and give us your name and address?
Yeah, my name's Phil Tolso. Address is 6641 Halsted Avenue. So. Sorry, I think you guys can hear me out of a loud voice.
Yeah.
This specifically is my place. That's my garage. That's my house. And so I saw.
Do you want to come back to the, we can't hear you over here.
And it has to be for real video.
You're on video.
Oh, all right. So that's my house is right next door to the boat house. And so I know we were going through some of the slides and I was, I was more concerned about the screening between that house or the boat house and my house. So, you know, out my kitchen window, we're not 10 feet away from 18 families screaming and yelling. So is there some sort of tree coverage or larger fence area that we plan on putting there? That would be question one. And by the way, thank you for doing that.
Oh, thanks. So the answer is.
Here, just want to address us and then we'll have him come up.
Okay.
Just give us the rest of your questions.
And then my second question was, I know we're, when you, the last three houses that are part of mound going, leading up to my home is all gravel. And prior to that, in Minatrista, it's all concrete. So are we replacing roads at this time when we have to do all the city stuff? Do like more paved roads and looks nice? And if yes, that's great. And my question would be after that, is, are we going to be assessed $10,000, $15,000 for that or is this going to be included in the, the offer?
Okay, thanks.
So.
We'll, we'll have him come.
So I'm, I'm glad you brought it because what we're going to do to pan the retailing and push the boat house as far to the north as possible to get away from your property. So essentially get it to, make sure I don't blow this thing up again. Get it tight to this side to allow trees to be put in here. Probably provide your speeches like that, give you some screening. In terms of road improvement, we're working through that. Obviously, the area, you know, this will be improved to create this turnaround in that area. But you actually sit in Minatrista, right?
Nope.
Are you mound? So mound comes like that.
Yeah, the last three houses are mound.
Okay, so this comes over and cuts across. So yeah, so we'll be working with city staff to see how that gets addressed. I can't see about how they'll deal with the assessments and not knowledgeable to answer that question. But I'll see if we need to improve roads, that'll be part of this development.
All right. Thank you. Rita? Can, sorry.
No, it's fine.
Or Sarah? Can you tell us about, when we approve that area, do we have to pave it? Or do that to pave it? Does anybody know? Okay, we don't know the answer yet.
Well, it's been an aspect, for those that have been in past concept plans, that has been a discussion that whether or not how that, if that gets paved and what the requirements are. So I think that hasn't been decided because we haven't gotten to the next step of a project to have a full conversation. Especially now that they're providing driveways to the blue and the gray single-family homes. So that is something we need to discuss, how that works and works.
It'd be pretty rinky-dink to have the whole thing beautiful and then the little wet-skin Mount Hucky, a little road that's all, you know, dinged up.
All right, any other buddy that wants to come up? All right. Bring it back to council. Any other comments or anything else?
I think everything that I was going to ask about got covered.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we're pretty comfortable, so.
Proceed.
Good luck, yeah. You still got to go through prime, eh?
Yeah.
Good luck with that, but.
Thank you.
All right, so, all right, number 11. Give me a second, I got to get it up here. Oh, you got it. Number 11, Lake Minnetoka area. Mayors.
Thank you. Looks lovely.
I just wanted to cop to. No, well, do you want to stay in just a, yeah, come back in. Wait for the door to shut. So the, the whole Lake Minnetoka area mayors, do you want to go down to the next page? You can see all the names on there. Shorewood, Minnetoka Beach, Deep Haven, Minatrista, Spring Park, St. Bonnie, Woodland. I think there's, might be a few on the other side, but. Bottom line, we all signed that we're against, basically, it's like the new missing metal bill or whatever, which takes control of exactly what we just saw here. The three things that we did tonight would take that away from us, more or less, and put it to the state. So we, we basically said, "Don't do that." We met with the senator, you know, all together and, you know, told her that. As well as we've, we've talked to her before when we went down to the Capitol. As well as we've, we've talked to her before when we went down to the Capitol. Um, the only thing I've heard on that is I guess it got out of committee, but from, I just talked to Representative Myers the other day and he said, no, that's just a dead bill, that's just dead. So, he said it's got bipartisan support, but he says he doesn't think it'll finish or pass.
Really?
To be dead. To get out of the committee.
Oh.
But he thinks once it gets to real life and really got a vote on it, he doesn't think it's gonna go anywhere, so.
Well, this letter is so well-written, I don't know who generated it. Did you or did one of the other mayors?
Greenwood mayor and staff.
Oh, wow, it's really great.
Yeah, and again, we, we do have her support. She's on, you know, supposedly, but we'll, we'll see. Hopefully, she, you know, continues with that support and, you know, if this goes farther than we want it to go, so. I, I don't know how, how she could vote for this if we're all against it.
Everyone.
That's all your cities, I don't know why you'd go for it.
Yeah.
So, anyway, if anybody else wants to reach out to our senator, um, you can, it's, there's your email on the top there.
Thank you. Can we send the same letter?
I mean, this is, I just wanted to show you, show, you know, the public what, what we're doing behind the scenes, so, um, it's just good to, you know, to let you guys know that, hey, we're, on be, on behalf of all these different mayors that we're, we're lobbying her to say, do not vote for this.
This was great to see, thank you.
Yeah.
Good job.
So, unless there's any questions on that, that's it. All right, um, and then, do you wanna talk after or, okay. All right, so number... Number, uh, twelve, we got, uh, council reports, so council member pew, do you have anything?
No, not much, um, last weekend, um, Gillespie had a, a series of events, spaghetti dinner, bingo, and a band and everything, I didn't attend any of it. But they had a resounding successful fundraising event, um, well over a thousand dollars, you know, it was successful. And so, that's good, they're continuing to, to be healthier financially. And, um, and a much more thriving center, I think there are more people going, they're starting to serve breakfast on Thursday mornings now. So, in addition to lunch on Wednesday, there'll be Thursday breakfast. And it's, it's a menu, so you get to select on breakfast. That's about it.
I was there.
Yeah.
At the, at the, the live event. I didn't eat dinner there, but I did see the, the band.
The band, yeah.
Yeah, I know Pastor Jeremy and he was, uh, he was very good. They did a Bob Dylan and then they did a kind of a everybody likes music, uh, set, so. That was cool. Um, and I, I did talk to, was it Rhonda?
Oh, yeah.
Um, and she, you know, obviously she was there, you know, the director.
Mm-hmm, yeah, she's really done an excellent job.
She's done a great job. And I mean, that plus the new church, you know, they got, they got a monthly, they got a, a year contract, so. That's, as you know.
Which makes a big difference for them, yeah.
Cool. Uh, council member McNeely?
Uh, I agree with Sheri, and I went to the breakfast on Thursday. And, um, they're gonna be doing that all through April to find out what kind of success and attendance they have. Then they'll decide if they're gonna do it going forward into the summer, so they're doing a fantastic job. Uh, and that's, I don't have anything.
Okay. Uh, council member Casalino?
I don't have anything.
Okay, council member Eric?
I don't have anything.
All right, and then, um, I just wanna say thank you for covering me. I didn't watch it.
It was a quick meeting, you did heck of a job.
Forty-five minutes.
Good, thanks.
There you go. Try it.
Um, I am gonna be out, uh, the first of May, the first one of May and the first one is June, unfortunately. I have a work thing I can't get out of. And then, uh, kind of an annual trip I go on in June, so, anyway, you're stuck with him.
We'll make it shorter.
You might have some things to talk about, you never know. Uh, but just so people know that. And then, uh, tomorrow night, uh, at the library, Senator Ann Johnson Stewart, we just talked about, is doing a bonding seminar, uh, kind of, you know, learning about bonding and how it works and which is kind of obviously important with what, what's going on right now. Uh, it's at six-thirty, um, so if anybody wants to stop by there. And then, um, I just toured, just before the meeting here, Jesse walked me through the whole city hall again. And, you know, just our seat right over here. Um, you know, kind of the whole point of like, we own this building, why? We're spinning our wheels, right? Getting back to like that whole conversation. Um, we went through every, literally every closet, every, um, open space, the jail downstairs. Um, I mean, the, the police, actually, there's one guy, there was actually a guy in there doing some work, uh, writing some notes or whatever. But, I mean, it's a huge area. I mean, we got a lot, a lot of extra space there. Then I went upstairs, um, to kind of the, you know, the conference room, the open, the area room. And I counted, you know, we had chairs and we have tables right now, but, you know, they're actually spread out more than this. And was it sixty chairs?
Yeah, they're both.
Well, sixty chairs and I think that's not broader capacity, I think it's probably more than that. If you go up there and you stand in the back corner, I mean, it's def, it's big, it feels bigger than this, maybe I'm wrong, but it definitely feels bigger than this. Now, yes, we'd have to recreate a stage, we'd have to do some audio visual, which we wanna do anyway. Maggie's holding off on buying a huge TV that I want her to do, um...
Couldn't you just take all this?
We could literally just, well, maybe.
Because, you know, a level of professionalism is important.
Yeah, I think you gotta do that. When I joke about conference tables, I'm kinda joking about them.
I know you are, but I always leave going, you know...
Is he serious?
With our, with our monikers and everything, I think at least we have going for us, we have a level of professionalism at our council meetings. Planning.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, you know, we would, you know, all, we don't overlap here either, so we would, you know, have, you know, plantings on whatever day and we're on whatever day and parks and, um, there's an elevator, there's stairs, there's bathrooms, lots of bathrooms. There's two right outside the door, but there's other ones. Um, parking obviously is one issue, um, that we could, we'd have to, you know, figure out or work through. But, um, again, even if we gave, you know, a little bit more room for, for this building, right? We'd have to maybe take a little bit of that for parking and the people have to walk up around the corner, but, um, anyway, I just think that, personally, I think we should keep continuing the conversation of, do we wanna keep looking into this or just kill it and so I can get it out of my brain? But, you know, again, we're in this building that doesn't produce anything, I mean, it's just, it, we just have it 'cause we, we just never got rid of it. And, you know, the capacity for down the road, right? You wouldn't believe how much open area we have in there. And even the mailroom, we went through the mailroom today, and if you guys have been there, you know, that big middle with a bunch of mail, it's literally dusty. It's never been, it's not been moved in years. And we're looking at, oh, there's an annual report from nineteen eighty-six, it's just sitting there, you know? Um, it's a monumental task to like, figure out, do we need all these things? We just put them in a, you know, file cabinet somewhere, you know, whatever we gotta do, sell that big machine maybe. Um, we could make two offices in that one room alone and put our mail somewhere else, so I'm just saying...
So, there's room for growth, the staff grows.
I'd love to just walk over there as a council before a meeting. And if you guys, you know, if you wanna do it yourself, go ahead, but if, like, you know, meet over there a half hour before the next council meeting and just go, let's just see what I'm seeing and maybe I'm wrong, but.
Well, I appreciate that, I wanna hear from the staff.
I was gonna say with them.
Like, Jesse, if, if there was growth within your, your staff, do you feel comfortable that there would be enough room to have everybody in an office?
Well, I will be as always as political as possible, but, um, we serve at the pleasure of the city council and if that's the way the city council ends up going for, you know, the benefit of the city, well, this, I, I think, I'll speak for Sarah briefly and this, this staff has made do for the last while and that's what we'll do. Um, but I would only just say that as long as the council, if that's their out we go, is willing to, you know, get creative and, uh, you know, if we're gonna use that space, we're gonna have, it'll have to be different, like, I mean...
You're gonna have to spend some money on some sheet rock and get a construction guy in there, get a bid and figure it out, but you have plenty of room. You, we, we talked about that.
Could Sarah get windows?
That's the, that's, that's where I was, the job line.
I think Sarah, it's like, everybody has a window and then there's Sarah, it's like you're in a little pantry closet.
I'm a cat, I, I'm just fine in there.
But, but yes, I, I, I think it's a very large building that, that was built for a very specific purpose in the early two thousands and if it, and it, if it's gonna be repurposed, yeah, as long as we can, you know, think creatively and, and thoughtfully, I think there's room to, to have to make a do.
Okay, she wants to say something.
Well, you know, I went on the tour about a month ago.
By yourself?
And I, well, no, I, I went with staff.
Okay.
Okay, and, and I wanted to go as the full council, but y'all said, oh, no, everyone do, do their own thing. So, I went and did my own thing.
Yeah.
Um, and I think what we have to realize is storage, there's a lot of stuff stored in this building that you can't, government documents that you can't get rid of for so many years. And so, there's some hidden space needs that, um, and when you look, when I went through, yes, the, the staff was all housed and there were a few spots, but there weren't, there wasn't really a lot of space for growth in terms of staff.
As it currently is with the mailroom being a waste of space and with, you know, there's, there's...
That's one room.
You'd have to think outside the box and say, what can we do, what kind of construction company come in?
Well, I, I built, you know, I built housing for many years.
You'll know that.
I understand space in construction, but...
There's plenty of room and, again, I think we've only ever reduced staff, we've never even really added staff.
Well, we reduced staff because of our budget issue. That doesn't mean that we probably could use more staff.
And I'm saying if we added three to ten, I think we have plenty of space for them. If we reimagine how we're gonna do it.
I just think that we have to really do a, a very comprehensive study because to get rid of something, then you've got, you, you, you're not gonna be able to replace it once you get rid of it. And so, that, that's the issue towards the future, um, you know, and maybe in the future, you don't need as much. Like, like I wanted to buy Timberland, my son said, paper's out, out the door, mom, don't buy Timberland, you know?
Oh, sorry.
Well, he says it is, you know, and he's in the printing business even. Um, but, you know, um, we have to, um, really be comprehensive. I think we, we wanna get all the facts and you went through and I went through and we both had different reactions. So, we really need someone to really outline all of this so that we're really looking at the full picture. You know, let's have all the, the information before we start doing the dreaming.
So, what would you want to move this forward to the next discussion item? You know, the next time we talk with it? What would make you happy?
Well, I think one is the space analysis of the, the other building in terms of how much available space is there really?
Okay.
And remember, we're sharing it with the fire department and we're going into the joint powers.
I'm not even talking about the fire department.
Okay.
Don't get me started on that, there's plenty of more room over there.
Well, I don't know, they seem to be pretty tight.
They're not tight, there's no...
But, um, but then I think we have to look at this building. And we say that we're not using this building, we, the city, but we are providing space for other government entities. And so, if we take away the space for them, where are they going? Do we lose having them in mound?
Well, this...
Is there a benefit of having them in mound versus them moving to Salsheer or Tonka Bay? So, I mean, I think those are the things that...
Yeah. I don't think the city of mound should be in the business of renting out their other spots just 'cause we have a spot to rent out. And again, we just kinda held onto this because we never did anything different, so, um, I, I don't know. I mean, we have a, what, thirty million dollar problem that we need water for? If, if we could spend a little bit of money here fixing that up to make this better, right? Push this over there, take all of our files in the basement, put in the basement over there, there's a lot of room on there. Just this is the tour.
Aren't we also, aren't we digitizing a lot of our files anyway?
Well, Kevin's working on that, yeah.
Yeah, Kevin, that's why I thought Kevin was working on it.
So, Kevin's got an office, but he also sits up front.
Right.
Right?
Right, yeah.
There's, but, you know, you can't digitize, I mean, he's got other things to do, so that, that's their problem too. If we really wanna take that on and maybe have some, someone come in that knows what they're doing and, hey, digit, that's all you do? And get, you, you've seen the, all the files in that main area?
No, I've done a project like that, so I know, yeah.
Right.
But your record retention is how long for the city?
There's a record retention schedule as different for different documents.
All the different documents, okay. So, yeah, but I mean, we can digitize them.
We got the whole police station basically downstairs, which is Bohasas Room.
There's a kennel down there and everything else in there.
We got kennels, we got, we got actually the jail cell, which does not use anymore, we don't book people there anymore. Again, I'm on the police commission, they do say they have it as an option if they're in this area and, you know, in the middle of the night, they just wanna get it done quick. I don't, again, from what Jesse was telling me, it doesn't happen like ever. There's cobwebs in there, we saw a spider web where you book people in. There's no computer, there's nothing there. Uh, yeah, it's a jail cell, we'd have to reimagine that, maybe we don't get rid of that part at, at first anyway, but there's other spots in that downstairs. Again, then you go on the fire station, let's just say we do do this, you know, combination thing. Um, there's a, you know, plenty of other desks and stuff in that side, so let's just say we did run out, we, we added another three to ten people over on this side. You can always, you know, have some over there, so, I, again, if, if y'all are against it, just let's just kill it, but I, I wanna move it forward or not.
I'm no different than I ever have been, if we can get a decent, a, a good price for this, a good... But I, I'm not interested in giving this away.
Absolutely, I wanna get paid for it, you know, and take that, put some towards our water, the rest of it to...
Right.
Update that. And, you know, maybe there's a new development here that some developer wants to do, wipe this, put in, like we just saw, a nice little development right on, kinda on the lake there.
Right next to the fire department where the alarms go off every...
Well...
And I'm also with Sheri, I, I still think there needs to be some, some more reevaluating.
So, what do we wanna do to move forward? Cause it's, it's just like we just keep talking about this and...
We pay people to do studies every time we turn around around here. Why can't we find someone to do an evaluation or a gap analysis and decide what is the value of this building? What do we need to do to accommodate everything we need over in that building? What are the expenses to do that? So, it's an overall picture of the entire...
Can we do that?
Yeah, actually, I've been working on that.
Go, Jesse, go.
Well, yeah, cause I agree.
You asked Bolton, right?
Yeah, they, okay. I don't know, that may not be the exact route, but we're exploring.
You're on it.
I mean, we've seen with other cities or vacant land and they put those posts, right? And they say, development opportunity, right? You know, we just reached, reached out to you and your buddy, right? But still, that was...
I mean, I went to college with them.
Your contact, that's very, very low level.
He's associate.
Yeah, it was a, it was a free market analysis.
Right.
And...
We want something a little bit more...
Yeah.
And that, that gave us a nice lens to what it could be.
Yeah, and there's also, there's always a difference, there's always a difference between market analysis and even getting an appraisal done and however you, whatever you wanna do, but there was, you know, one thing that came out of it is that there is some value in, in the land, looking at this, the building itself, but not for development. I mean, there's, there's probably more information that could be garnered and put together.
So, Jesse, when do you think you'll have some news on that?
Well, at this point, hopefully tomorrow.
Wow, that's fast.
I, I didn't just ask him today, don't worry.
All right, well, keep that on the list so we can come back to it. Um, the, April twenty-ninth, Tuesday, uh, does it work for us to do a joint, uh, uh, parks meeting? Does that work for anybody?
I don't, I don't have my calendar, I don't know if I'm back.
April twenty-ninth?
April twenty-ninth.
Six P M. or seven?
Uh, sure.
I think I...
Can I respond when I get home and look at my, I think I might still be on both of them, but I gotta respond, I gotta...
I've gotta go to a celebration of life and then...
Okay, so it's not gonna work?
That's probably...
What are you saying, Tuesday the twenty-ninth?
Seven P M.
Or six. It's a special meeting, so it's for six.
It's, it's like our off night, right?
Oh, it's our off week.
But if you're out of town and you're...
I gotta respond to it, I can't answer that, 'cause I don't have my calendar.
As long as they don't go to New Orleans.
Tuesday, April twenty-ninth.
It's Jazz Fest.
Ooh, that's a good one, I've been to that one.
Is there a secondary date that we could put?
Well, I don't, uh, if, it would be helpful if, if there is one that very quickly we could come up with. Uh, Maggie was going to float this to the Parks Commission on Thursday this week, so, um, they have yet to opine either, but, um...
What about the twentieth?
It's April twenty or May?
It'd be May twentieth.
Oh, you're saying May twentieth now?
I keep my Tuesdays free, so I'm pretty... Either that or we have to do it on, on a different night than a Tuesday?
May twentieth would work.
Well, they meet on Thursdays.
Yeah, I know, but this would be a separate meeting.
I'm just saying that they, they meet on Thursdays.
So, it'd be May twenty-second, would that work?
Well, here's the problem with going too far, 'cause we wanna start doing some of the stuff that we want them to do, so...
Yep.
I don't wanna go too far out, so is there anything this month? End of the month that could work, or you're, you're gone for sure?
I'm leaving on Thursday.
For like till the end of the month?
For, for, like twelve days.
Okay.
And I've got, uh, work-related thing, that's why I don't open back on the twenty-ninth.
But into the first week of May, you could probably work something?
Oh, yeah, probably. But again, I'm not a, a phone calendar girl, I'm a tactile girl, so my calendar's at home, I, I have no idea.
I won't be back in town though until after that first week of May.
Where are you going?
Under a celebration of life for my husband.
We, we can follow up too with, uh, an email, this was just sort of, uh...
Yeah, a couple dates that we've all been there.
You're all sitting here, so pitch it out, but it sounds like this is probably not gonna be the one, so...
Well, the problem is if we keep pushing this off, you know, parks, they, they wanna do stuff in the summer, right? They wanna start getting stuff done.
We do want, we wanna ask for some money so we can have an ice cream social.
Why did I say that?
No, we, we wanna have an ice cream social with all the people who do the flowers in our parks.
Oh.
You know, like we did the volunteer reception for the other volunteers for the people who do our parks. We thought an ice cream social would be kind of fun.
Would you be doing it down at the ice cream shop?
Probably, 'cause wouldn't you buy mound, right?
I love it, I think it's great.
So, Jesse?
We might even do it at farmer's market.
Well, we get together and then we gotta float a couple dates, um, I mean, it...
If you could just give us a couple, then we can all just say, yeah, this works.
Then, of course, it has to work for that. So it's like seven, ten people, you know, it has to work.
Can we go to the actual meeting, or is, or your agenda is usually really full?
The actual meeting?
Oh, Maggie, there you are. You're hiding behind that screen tonight.
Our meeting this Thursday is pretty busy. I think our, the second, oh, no, we don't, I'm thinking council, oh, my gosh. I think our April, no.
You mean May?
May, meeting will be just fine. We can maybe do a joint meeting that one.
That, you could maybe add that to a couple of dates that we can look at.
But what, what week is that?
First, second weekend.
It's the second Thursday of the month.
Yeah, that won't work for me. I just totally, I was, I'm out of town.
The second Thursday is May eighth.
Okay, well, again.
Technically, you're correct, Ken. I won't be here.
It's useless to do this. I don't have a calendar, so I can't even ask.
Well, then we're going to email back and forth for two weeks, so.
Well, I don't think so. If you can give two or three dates.
Yeah, okay.
We'll do that.
All right. We'll try.
Speaking of dates.
Even if most of us can show up, and if we can't get us all, it's not going to, you can't guarantee it was going to be.
Yeah. Speaking of dates, Kyle sent us a group email, which.
That was a mistake. He shouldn't have.
I understand that. But are we going to be able to set something up and make it a public meeting, or what was the purpose?
No, he shouldn't have sent that to you. It was an accident. It was, it was supposed to be just Jesse and I. He's a new staffer. He doesn't.
Yep, yep, yep. Got it.
It was a mistake. I called Myers and I said, you can't do an, it's an open meeting. You can't invite us all to a meeting. This doesn't make any sense. Oh, that was a mistake. You shouldn't have sent that, so. Jesse and I are doing that Friday morning, and, yeah, it's just a quick little thirty-minute meeting. So basically, what it is, is they're looking at, is there any option to, yes, you know, the money might, you know, might or might not happen, right? Probably not going to happen for thirty million, for sure. But is there any backup plan? This is what I was talking about with the senator, is can we do some kind of bill where it's like, you know, you get three grand from the state, and then you get rebated with, you know, reverse osmosis and water software. And so you kind of do your own thing, right? I know a lot of us are doing our own thing, but it's a Band-Aid bill, basically, but we're looking into that, is what that's about, so. And then you're, I know you're, you're working on the Mound Economic Development Committee idea or floating things.
Concept, yeah.
Got your email. I don't know if you want to, maybe next time, talk about anything on that, or?
Do we have a date yet on the website coming up?
So, the delay on the website. So, Councilmember McInney and I are, I would say we're pretty much almost done with the design and content. The delay is coming with trying to coordinate going live with another project, which is the Invoice Cloud platform. Noah and I, the finance director, met with, did a meeting with them last week. We're confident that they have what they, there's just been some, I don't know, coordination issues with the two companies that are involved. We think they're on the right track now. I'm hoping it'll go live within the next month. I'm hoping both, I'm hoping both will be solved by, in the next month. So that's.
But Maggie, didn't you say the iCloud is because they're, they're having to deal with a couple different groups that aren't coming together?
Yeah, so essentially, we have an outside company that does our billing. And so, Invoice Cloud and Opus, who does our billing, they have to coordinate their softwares to talk to each other. And the issue that we were running into is that we are unique in the sense that we have quarterly billing, so we have three groups that go out. So we stagger our billing. And so, instead of having one big batch of data, we've been having to, long story short, they're, they know, they know what the issue is now, and they know what they need to do to fix it. And so, I'm hoping I'll have an update by the end of this week or early next week on where that status is, but the whole goal was to get both of these projects done at the, or to have that solved, so that when the website goes live, people will have the ability to then use Invoice Cloud at the same time, if that makes sense.
Yeah, we don't want to, we don't want to get the website up and running, and then nobody can, nobody can still pay their bill yet. Because that's part of the functionality and perk that we're trying to offer the residents is the Invoice Cloud. So it would be kind of silly to go live if that's not, that just adds that, oh, great, here we go. We're new, we have a new thing, but this doesn't work, you know, so. Since most of the world has no idea we're really getting a new website, we'd rather have it one hundred percent functioning to make a launch.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think it's on most people's list. It's been on our, top of our heads for a year, but.
Yeah. But I would say, yes, the website is almost there.
Great. That was something we were talking about, but adding a page to the website that talks about economic development, what Mound's open for business, so on and so forth.
I was going to suggest on Tuesday, Thursday, at two o'clock, Explore Minnesota has a monthly webinar where they talk, different cities talk about their different economic development activities. And so, you can join, just go to Explore Minnesota, and it's Hernandez is the staff person that conducts it, excuse me.
Right. Well, Hennepin County also has a very strong economic development website as well.
Yeah.
That we can leverage as a resource.
Yeah, I think he does that one, too. I think he coordinates accounting pieces. But, you know, at one time, I wanted to have him come and talk to us directly, and he's willing to do that, you know, around the economic development.
Tomorrow morning, I'm going to meet with the mayor of St. Bonnie. Just, I don't know. He wanted me, so we'll see what we're going to talk about. Thursday, we're meeting the Budget Committee, Finance Committee, and we're going to kind of start digging into, you know, is it feasible to stay on our financial plan, kind of, and pay for a water treatment as a Plan B, and see what options we would have if, if that would work out, if we don't get any funding, or the whole amount, or whatever. So, again, kind of just starting that conversation. On the fifteenth, we have the Fire Partnership meeting again. That's, you know, combining our fire departments. We're making quite a bit of progress there. We, we're, we're kind of waiting on the budget part. We kind of have what we think we want for Mound, and we're going to kind of propose it to the group, per se. And then, but we did make some pretty good progress on the contract. So the contract part, I thought was going to be a little bit more the sticky part. And we actually kind of agreed, we actually got a lot done this last meeting. So, again, let's just say all this works out, and we actually come up with a budget and the contract, and then we actually vote on it. I think the goal is June, June or July?
Thereabouts.
Okay. And then, really, we would bring it back to us to actually officially vote on it, what, August or so?
I would say in that same timeframe, just for budgetary purposes.
Yeah, before we, before August. And then, last thing is, on next Wednesday morning at seven-thirty, the sixteenth, we're going to do Coffee with a Cop. So if anybody is listening or seeing this, stop out, Mound, Caribou, coffee, seven-thirty.
And what the, what day?
The sixteenth, next Wednesday, the sixteenth, seven-thirty in the morning, probably go to eight-thirty or so. But we have, was it just one officer or a couple maybe coming out?
The chief and some others, whoever's available is encouraged to swing by and spend some time. I don't know if Tony was just talking a big game, but he sort of indicated that, you know, they'll stick around as long as they can, so.
Yeah.
People show up, you know, you got an audience.
Okay. Is there a way we could maybe, beyond just us sitting there in Caribou with, you know, with cops, and then people walk in, can we say, maybe do like a little sign or something, Coffee with a Cop, something like that? I know you, is it, did you create that graphic, or did she? Maybe just blow that up and put it on an easel or something, just so people know what we're doing? If anybody just walks in randomly and they go, hey, you want to chat with Mound or Orno Police?
Kind of an intro. If people walk in, so they know they're in the right space.
Yeah. That's it, so. Anything else anybody has? Number thirteen, you guys got anything? You cover everything? All right. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, all right, we're adjourned.